I don't see anyone here for public comment, so. To approval of minutes. Um, I did not have any changes this time. Did anyone have any changes to the minutes?
Well, I had that minor correction just to say that. We had mentioned the record and retention policy, moving that up a little bit.
Okay. Anything else?
I had sent that to Michael. Or Michelle.
So I think in I I'd suggest in future, um, sending it to everybody, just so that way we can say we reviewed it and approved it.
Oh, I thought that I did, but maybe I didn't.
You might have, and I might not have.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Uh, this noted if I didn't.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Jennifer and Sylvia seconds. Great. All those in favor?
I.
Okay, great. That passes. All right. Meet the auditor. How exciting. We've been looking forward to this.
Hi, everybody. My name is Matt Miller, and I'm one of the partners with McMahon and Associates. Um, I'm sure that I'm a new face to all of you. Um, to give you a little introduction to our firm. We are based out of Avon. And our firm has been around in the Vale Valley. Uh, since the nineteen sixties, and we're kind of a unique firm in that we specialize in financial statement audits. So we don't do bookkeeping. We don't do personal tax return work or anything like that. Um, we do financial statement audits all year round, and our primary focus is with local governments. So probably about eighty percent of the clients that we work with are local governments, all here in Colorado. Um, the bulk of where we work is up in the mountains. Having a mountain location means that you work with a lot of uh, mountain entities. Um, our firm is uh, pretty much the only firm I believe that has ever audited the town of Vale. Um, but basically, if you pick a ski town, we audit the county, the municipalities, all the way down to their special districts. And so there's three partners at our firm, and we each kind of have um, a different focus area. So one of our partners works primarily with school districts. One of them has um the larger municipalities, so or counties. So um, we audit like probably twenty percent of the counties within the state. Um, and then I work primarily with district governments in Colorado. So that would be library district, special district. Um, you know, metro district, buyer district, things like that. Um, so our firm audits, I believe, fifteen other library districts. Uh, we audit really, really small rural libraries up to um, you know, countywide, they have, you know, nineteen locations, things like that. Um, so we work with a variety of of special districts in general. Um, and then I believe you were looking for an overview of what the actual audit process is like. Um, so the way that we break down the audit process is into kind of three main areas. The first is planning, the second is fieldwork, and then the final is called reporting. Um, reporting is ultimately what you're hiring us for, to issue the audit report, and then we also issue what's called a governing board letter. Um, it's things that were required to tell you, and then also anything that we feel is necessary to tell you. Um, and so to kind of back up from that planning process, that's kind of three main parts within planning. Planning is a big part of the audit. Um, first of all, there's kind of standard audit planning that you have to do. So risk assessment, understanding of the entity. The second part would be kind of understanding what happened to your all year. So we read all your meeting minutes. We would compare budget to actual um, in future years, we will compare uh, you know, year over year numbers. So basically, we want to see what happened during the year, what you planned to happen that didn't, what you didn't plan to happen that did, um, gain an understanding of that. And then the next part um is what we kind of call interim uh, audit process. And so that's when we are understanding how your transactions flow. So we would meet with someone and talk about every major um, transaction cycle, and then we actually walk through examples of every major transaction cycle. So we would talk about payroll, then we would pull payroll and make sure that what you told us is happening is actually happening. Um, and then the last part of planning is what's called data analytics. So we actually take your entire database. Um, and this is something that has kind of shifted in auditing the last couple of years. But we will take your entire database and then uh, certain sections of information out of your database and run data analytics on it. And to give you just a few examples of what we do there, um, we can take a list of every P card transaction that you've had, basically all your credit card transactions from every employee. And we can um, extract from that. So we would look for, let's say, weekend transactions or holiday transactions. Um, we can look for specific vendors. We can search through any kind of uh, memo that's on there for what they're buying. If it says, you know, gift or gift card, um, things like that. P cards also come with vendor code or uh, it's a vendor code, but basically tells you what kind of vendor it is. So we can search through there. Um, we can identify combinations of journal entries that would fall outside of the normal kind of scope of business. Um. The amount, the the amount of things you can do with data analytics is kind of endless. And then the last thing that we always do are statistical models. So basically, um, something like Benford's Law is essentially a statistical prediction of fraud. And so if anything popped out in that, we would obviously kind of focus there. Um, but the ultimate goal of planning is to give us an idea of where we we need to focus during fieldwork. Uh, and so then the second part is fieldwork. That's essentially what people think of as an audit. I think that's when we're looking at bank statements. Um, looking through invoices, we would be recalculating your payroll. Um, you know, checking any kind of major agreements, things like that. And then the final part, as I mentioned before, is reporting. Um, and so once we've kind of gone through all of the fieldwork and everything there is when we go back to our office and prepare this.
Uh-oh.
We lost you, Matt. You froze.
Let's see. Matt. You are frozen.
I thought I saw his eyes move, but I guess not.
Your your eyes are playing tricks on you. Now he's back.
Everybody froze there for a second, so.
You froze too.
We lost you at reporting.
Okay, so then the last part is reporting. Um, that's where we're issuing uh, basically the two final reports. The one would be the uh, report on the audited financial statements, um, which is what you need to be in compliance with Colorado. And then the second one is that board letter where we would um basically write anything that we felt was necessary to report to you. Um, things that I like to always mention, you know, as a external auditor, we work for the board. We don't work for um, anybody at the district. So, you know, we're always going to communicate with you. When the actual audit week starts, we will send everybody an email. Um, you know, kind of giving you basically our contact information. Uh, there's some questions in there, you know, if you had any concerns, that's when we were, we hope that you'll bring them up to us. Um, if anything came up during the audit, we would communicate with you. And then at the end of the audit, we let you know basically how everything went. So I can leave it there for any questions you might have of me or any other things about the audit process itself you're curious about.
Yeah, go Sylvia.
Um, hi, Matt. Um, so my question is, so you mentioned that a lot of your clients are currently very small. So just in the sense of um, like where where this district falls like on the scale, like are we one of your largest clients? Are we your largest client? Like, just um, just so I have a sense of like what range of client you work with.
Uh, I guess we work with small to large. Um, from a dollar perspective, this is a not a, not a big client to us. We work with um, you know, counties that have two hundred and fifty million dollar budgets. Um, we work with large municipalities that have really significant budgets.
Okay, awesome.
And then as far as um, library districts go, it, you're a larger library district, but you would fall kind of in the middle of special district entities in general as far as size. Um, we have some, some special districts that are real monsters. You know, they might have hundred and fifty million dollars of revenue.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Matt, for, oh, go, go ahead, Sam.
Oh, you go ahead, Jen.
Uh, I was just gonna ask what, around what times of the year where will we be seeing the most of you? Is it like tax season? Is it end of calendar year? Is it end of fiscal year? What's the?
So this year, um, is dependent on the city of Boulder, because until they give you that final IDA and the final number that you owe them. Um, well, it's not really. You know, we can't really start because you don't have your final numbers yet.
Okay.
In a, in a typical year, the bulk of what we work with would be from February until kind of May. Um, so we would schedule your fieldwork for uh, typically one week increments is how we schedule. And then we put as many staff members on it during that week as we need to get it done during that week. Um, and so in probably the first year, you will see us twice. One time we will come and do those interim items. So we're going to talk with everybody about various processes. Uh, and then we would come back for the final, which would be more or less in the spring. And then probably after the first few years, once all the processes are in place, we can combine those into one week.
Cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Matt, do you interview us individually, or is, or is your email to us just our opportunity if we have any questions or concerns to send those to you?
So the email is just to open a line of communication. Um, we're not going to necessarily call everybody and make you respond to us. Uh, to be honest, a lot of boards that we email, nobody responds to us. Um, we consider that to mean that they feel that everything is okay. Um, you know, because we do send that email out, but we would interview staff members for sure. And then we're always available. Um, if you do have an audit committee to meet with the audit committee, uh, some of our clients have an audit committee, some don't. It's not required. Um, it would be more or less an informal meeting rather than have us uh, you know, present at a, at a formal board meeting. Either one, we're happy to do. Um, but that gives you a little more time to ask questions if you wanted to ask questions not in a public meeting. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Hmm.
Other questions? Okay. So I'm hearing that this year you don't really know when you're going to start. Um, we're assuming we're going to hear from the city, I would think, January by getting our final numbers, so. Can be looking at probably February. Is that going to make the audit time later, or is there a deadline by which that has to be done?
Um, so the, kind of the state statute is by June thirtieth. The state gives you an automatic extension to July thirty first, and then you can apply for an additional extension for two more months with the state. Um, I believe that you maybe missed the audit exemption form, so whether or not the state would approve, that is hard to say.
I think you froze again, Matt. There we go.
There you go. He's back.
Hiccup.
Sorry, did you, did you catch any of that?
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
Okay.
After that time, that was convenient. Yeah. Um, so can we talk a little bit about policies too? That was um, the other thing, you know, since we're just starting out and can you sort of walk us through how you can help us there?
Um, so the library sent me basically a list of policies that they had already kind of planned on having. Um, and so what I did there is I pulled examples from other library districts, um, or other kind of similar entities. Um, a few of them actually came from a county, one of the counties that we audit. They put their financial policy manual online. So it's just a good resource to go look at. You know, this, it's a big county. They comply with all federal um, guidelines, which I believe is what your goal is to have policies that do comply with the federal guidelines in the event that you do get federal dollars, and I think that's smart. Um, because it's technically, it would be a finding if you got federal dollars and you didn't have those policies in place. So to just kind of do it from the get-go makes sense. Um, so what I did was basically provide example policies. Um, I'm happy to answer questions on all of those, but um, from an independent independence standpoint, we can make recommendations on the policies, but we can't actually present a policy. And so this is essentially upfront. Um, which I think is a good way to do it, because if you passed a bunch of policies and then we came in and had a bunch of recommendations, then you just have to create the policies again. So I think it, the way that the library is handling it makes sense, which is do it first, and then they shouldn't have to change anything moving forward.
Great, that's helpful. So you're working with Jennifer then to figure out the sequence of when we take up which financial policies, as, as you probably know, we're going through a whole list of of policies over this next year.
Um, not necessarily, I guess, the sequence. Uh, again, what policies you pass and when is up to the library. Um, but what we would be looking for is that basically by the time that the audit rolls around, um, you have basic financial policies in place. Um, they sufficient that, you know, it wouldn't be an audit finding. Basically, if you don't have any policies, then you don't really have controls, um, which can cause a problem. So by the time we do show up for the audit, we're you know, hoping that at least the basic ones are in place. The important ones would be like a procurement code. What you can buy and what you can't buy is important.
Great. Doug. Doug, you made it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I know. I was just uh, moving my cursor. Um, I think you, you know, we've purchased or are in the process of purchasing some accounting software, and I guess are you advising and you, I think this is yes, but on how we're setting that up so that it makes for the best transparency and uh, for auditing and such and such that.
Yep. So the first thing that we've started with is the chart of accounts. Um, so they sent me the chart of accounts. And then we talked about, um, basically what level of detail they're going to track at. Um, in Colorado, if you're familiar with governments, I guess it's not Colorado specific, but government accounting in general. There's essentially two types of financial statements that governments report. One is a consolidated long term, and then one is are the fund levels, and those are essentially um, short term. You don't see long term items on there like debt and capital assets. Uh, so we kind of talked about what level of information the district would like to track. Um, just because governments in general are all different. Some of our clients only track their funds. Some of them track everything. And also how you do that is kind of subjective, depends on kind of how the accountant wants to do it. Um, so we, that's where we've started is essentially they've decided here's our chart of accounts, um, how they want kind of the departments to flow. And then what information you want to track. So they're going to track both the long term and the short term, the funds. And then the next step would be, um, kind of once they get their hands in there, going through the processes to see um, if there's any, anything like a segregation of duties issue where, you know, one person has control of an entire cycle. Um, just controls in general, that would kind of be the final process there. Um, and then from a reporting standpoint, um, because we put your financials together, we don't rely too much on internally generated reports. But we would make sure that what they are generating internally, um, for example, balances. I have seen softwares where they write reports that just don't make sense. So we would be checking those the first few years. Uh, obviously, that's the information that you're relying on. That's how you're going to budget. Uh, needs to be right.
Great. Um, other questions, folks? Okay, I don't see anybody. So thank you very, very much, Matt. This has been very informative. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate your help. Um, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, we look forward to working with the library. Um, we're always around. If you, if anybody ever has any concerns, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to us. Um, this is a unique year because you're just kicking off, but we always like to tell our clients that uh, we're open for communication. You know, we would always rather you bring something to us before doing it, because then we can talk about it rather than us having to try to figure out what you did after your So we're always available. Um, you can always shoot us an email or give us a call.
Great, thank you. And and Jennifer, that reminds me, we probably need to do something so that the board has access to contact information for people like Matt. We all have Kim's access of contact information, but you might want to think about that going forward.
And that's why we email everybody at the beginning of the audit too. Um, the partner obviously stays the same. This will have a manager on it. Um, and the manager's name is Lillian. Uh, she's a CPA and she has like twelve years of experience as well. And then you'll have rotating staff on it every year. So we keep some consistency and then some new people. So you'll have a number of people who will be consistent every year. And someone to contact.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll let you go back to the evening.
Hope the rest of the meeting goes well.
Alright, thanks, Matt.
Okay, I think Budget and Finance Committee is up next with our short-term investment strategy recommendation.
Do you want to start, Jen, or do you want me to?
Uh, you wanted to, you had some visuals you wanted to share, yeah, David?
Yeah, I mean, that's most central to the idea. If you want to pitch what we're talking about first, and then I can bring up the cash flows so people can take a look at how um, how it might work.
Yes, um, so we uh, got a cash flow analysis back in from David Cox, the financial assis- uh, consultant. Um, and he took a look at what our operating expense needs would be. Uh, what he would propose for us to keep in our reserve. And then suggested conservatively what he thought we could invest over and above that, that would be in the bank. Um, and I think, David, I, I mean, I don't know if how much more you want me to set that up.
I, I, I was, I, I thought you had had such a a nice script, but that's fine. Let's just go. Um.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I thought you, you didn't want it to pass, so I'll share my screen. Uh, can you see it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so great. Um, so I, I think the finance subcommittee is going to recommend that we initially in January, because we can only do it once a month, there's only one opportunity a month to in put our money into a hybrid DDA. The hybrid is a, a account where then we would earn interest. Uh, so we would be earning interest uh, on our just money that's in the account at three point six two percent currently. It might, that number might change slightly, but at that rate with the amount of money that we have uh, projected in the bank, um, through the course of twenty twenty four, we raise about uh, somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars uh, in uh, in-interest income on just the balance in our accounts. That accounts for the, the payoffs of debt that as you see currently here, and we're estimating at thirteen million dollars in June and in December. Um, and then there's an opportunity uh, also to put some of the money, tie some of the money up into CDs. Those are either three, six, nine, or twelve month CDs, um, all insured at a hundred and two percent. Um, and so uh, for that, you would probably make another uh, another point. So roughly eighteen to twenty-two percent more than the three point six six two, so up to four point six four interest on the investment, so it could push that total uh, above the six to seven hundred thousand up by between eighteen to twenty-two percent. Now, I, I don't think we can tie it all up in uh, CDs. That's, that's for you guys to discuss. Um, but this is kind of the cash flow analysis. Uh, we don't have a lot of data to base it on. Uh, we have last year's tax receipts. Um, and so you can see that line projected across the top in terms of the receipts. Uh, obviously, by July first, uh, we have received about ninety percent of all the revenue that we're going to receive for the year uh, in the last, uh, from August to December. Uh, it's a smaller amount that comes in, and I, this may even actually be over estimated based on the current receipts that we're receiving this year. And then uh, the next line shows the operational expenses. Now we do uh, and I, I think the initial number here, um, might be somewhat high because what we're, what we've done in the budget is we've protected twelve full months of staffing, and so we will be ramping up uh, staffing, and that's why the number in terms of operational expenses grows from one point one million to one point six by June, um, and then uh, slight growth after that as we uh, add a few more staff. Um, and so you can see then we also have the debt uh, payments uh, lined up in June and in December. But if I scroll down and forgive me, your old faces are over my scroll button. Um, you'll see that we have uh, on balance, um, you know, in that fifteen to twenty million dollar range, uh, monthly, available money that we could either have in the investment accounts, the DDA, which would be in the DDA if we opted to go that route. And then some of it we could uh, choose to invest in CDs. Uh, if it was not going to be needed in that timeframe that you line the CDs up for either three months, six months, nine or twelve. I kind of was just playing around on the sheet to see how long we could tie various monies up for through the end of the year. Um, we are kind of estimating, um, that we would want to keep approximately the reserve, the two million dollar reserve outside of um, the CD accounts. And for what? I don't know, but like, just because I think we all feel nervous about having so much money, but we want to keep some of it close to hand. So the number that you see in the line forty-two of the page, thirteen, thirteen, eighteen, seventeen, seventeen, slightly higher than what David Cox gave us, but I don't think David Cox, um, he did not do the projections based on the receipts. He just kind of uniformly put a dollar amount each month, and so it spread out more heavily uh, throughout the course of the year. We use, you can see that by the time we make the final payment in December, back to the city, um, we're kind of squeezed. If, if we had five million at that point left in a twelve month CD, that was going to close out at the end of the month, we might be squeezed a little lower than our two million dollars that we're keeping in reserve. So I don't know. I hope all that made sense. Uh, it's a lot of money. Um, we we can you know, just merely going in with it. I, I, I look to you all for the recommendation. I mean, that, the hybrid DDA makes absolute perfect sense to me, and that, that earns us between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue on this money. Um, moving it into the CDs, I think, uh, could gain us more. Yes, Doug. I'm sorry.
You're on mute, Doug. I think.
Yeah, can you go down to the other chart? The other, at the bottom of the page? I think I understand this. Uh, so you have eight, I don't know, eight and five, you have thirteen million dollars in CDs in January. Is that what you are?
I, I was playing around with what we could do. Yeah.
That's a max. And and that would keep two and a half million in, in the DDA or something. Uh, or in this, whatever that other hybrid thing is.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think for sure we, we move everything into that. And my then recommendation or whatever would be, um, I think thirteen is a, is pretty high. But we might move, you know, the, my thing is to buy, since the interest rates aren't that much different on a three month versus a six month or a twelve month or a nine month, I would just buy three month CDs. And um, I guess you know, that they're expecting, you know, maybe rates to fall middle of next year. Um, and so maybe we look at a little longer term one in May or something. Um, is my, would be my suggestion. Um, I don't know if we tie up thirteen million or seventeen million, but uh, whatever the board felt comfortable with, I at least half of that I feel comfortable with. I guess.
So yeah, I, I think like maybe Di- um, David gave kind of the in-depth um, nerdy explanation for, for those of you who are um, uh, like super interested in, in CDs and uh, treasuries and, and that sort of thing. Like, I, I want to say it in a simp- more simplified way and, and hope that it resonates with some, because I'm not a, a huge finance person myself. What we sort of uncovered through the charting of this cash flow is that anything over and above five million dollars that's in the bank What we sort of uncovered through the charting of this cash flow is that anything over and above five million dollars that's in the bank account. Each month is reasonably investable. And so that, that amount varies month to month. It can be thirteen million, sometimes it's seventeen million. It's just, it's a lot of dollars. When we talked about this as a Budget and Finance Committee on Friday, you know, we felt comfortable with. About ten of that in the first quarter in a three-month CD. And then a reevaluation essentially in Q two. To see, okay, hey, is keeping five million dollars in our hybrid DDA account that's earning. About as much interest as a CD, but one percentage less. Is, is it worth it for us to put, tie this money up for three months at a time, quarter over quarter? Or should we just keep everything in that hybrid DDA, you know, earning three point seven two percent interest? So our recommendation as a. As a, as a Subcommittee is really, hey, maybe we don't max out the investable amount, which is in January about thirteen million dollars. Maybe we do ten for three months. And then sort of come back to the board, reevaluate as a Subcommittee and come back to the board and say, you know what, that was a good investment. We got, you know, another percent. On ten million dollars that we wouldn't have gotten if we had just kept it in a bank account. And I think that's kind of where we, I mean Sylvia, David, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think that's where we landed on Friday is. You know, David wanted to show you, here's the incredible amount of cash that we have because of this funny anomaly of payments. And having collected our revenues this year, but not yet spent them. However, we want to be really conservative, even though we satisfy all our needs, plus two million dollars of reserve. With a five million dollar bank account, we still don't want to invest like the balance in a CD. Just in case something comes up that we have not or cannot anticipate. So I think that's sort of like the non, that's like the high-level way of saying it, so not dissimilar to what you just recommended, Doug.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's twenty-five grand, right? The extra point is twenty-five grand on that ten million.
Meaningful, yeah.
So it's not nothing, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's not a percent, that's the clarification that needs to be made, right? It's not, it's not a percent difference. It's when you think. It's between, it's around twenty percent more earnings.
And one thing I thought about, and I didn't really, we didn't really get into it in the Budget and Finance meeting. But like, you know, we should probably come up with some, just a few bullet points to try to help folks kind of understand what we're doing. Because, I mean, last week when we had the board meeting, you know, even someone on the commission had asked some questions that indicated. You know, they weren't really clear on what we were doing. So I, I think that if, you know, maybe, you know, Jen and David and I came up with just a few simple bullet points. To try to help folks understand that we're not dipping into the budget money, we're not, you know, we're not. We're being very careful about this, but it just seems like an opportunity that we don't want to miss to, you know, benefit the library, so.
And the taxpayers.
And the taxpayers, thank you, yes.
So are we making a decision today on anything, or do you, what direction do you need from the board?
So like David said, for some reason that isn't totally clear to us, JP Morgan Chase is pretty strict about. Us moving our funds from our not very high-interest earning account to this hybrid DDA account. And or into CDs, they only do that at the top of every month. So since we're not meeting again until the next month begins, after the next month begins. We probably do need some sort of motion today to approve that first initial tranche to invest in Q one in January. And David, I, forgive me if I misspoke, I, I, I thought we spoke about ten million, not thirteen. You were just kind of showing us that we have thirteen to invest.
Yeah, we were.
Is that correct?
Not, yeah, I, I, we kind of, we talked all around it on last Friday, and then I think we need to. We need a solid number so I can call the bank and say, do, yeah, we have to keep, we have to keep two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Minimum in the DDA, right? So that, but then we have well over that, like we're.
So would we move everything to the DDA?
Yes.
Okay, that, that, that's the hybrid thing, that, just so I'm clear on that.
That's basically the bank account with a slightly higher interest.
Okay.
So I, I just have a couple of questions. So. What we're doing here with respect to the DDA is probably something that we would continue to do going forward in the future, right?
That's right.
And then what we're talking about with the CD is really just an artifact of this year. Because we have this extra chunk of money. And next year, we won't really have the same kind of an investment opportunity as far as we know. Is that correct?
I think that's, that would be my assumption as well, Johnny. There, the, the reality is. There will be a carryover into next year, and it's going to be probably, you know, this, this is the, this is the history of every single district that I know of. Is that you're cash-rich in the first four or five years by the end of its cycle, whether that's twenty years, thirty years, forty years. Before you go back out for an increase in the mill levy, your cash numbers just dwindle and dwindle, so you're thinking, I can't, I can't make operating expenses. So there will be, you know, I think we will be cash-heavy in those first few years, especially lining up projects, getting things done, the time it takes to do it. That's going to be money that's not spent and money that we'll have to make decisions about in the future, but nothing, I think, coming close to this. Although in our conversations with Matt Miller, the auditor that you guys just met, there are districts in the state of Colorado, smaller ones, but. And there are some large ones, Weld County, right? So for instance, who frequently carry. Three times their annual operating in reserve. So that is like, that would mean we would be carrying, you know, sixty million. I, I don't see that, the scenario where that happens. I don't think that's how we set the mill levy, but yeah, you don't know. Because property taxes, again, we can't say where it's going to land.
So that's helpful. So going back to Sylvia's suggestion about some bullet points, which I think is a really, really good idea. I assume you guys saw the inquiry we had from the member of the public on the trustee side today going into this. I think it would be helpful to frame this as this year is a unique opportunity. Because we have all of this cash right at the moment and our payments to the city are staged. Such that we can actually make some money and build up reserves for the future going forward. So in explaining it in that context, and I think providing that. Context you just said, David, of, you know, going out when we start looking ten years out. We start seeing our operating costs and our revenues getting closer and closer together. So doing what we can to maximize the benefit to the library and the taxpayers. Through investments and careful management of this money will just help us in the outlying years. And if there's a simple way of saying that, that might help people sort of understand and get past the notion of, oh, you've got all this money. You know, what are you doing with it? Well, we're trying to plan for the future by both addressing the needs that we've committed to do now. But also being conservative and trying to build up a little bit of extra reserve going forward when we expect to see things flatten out more.
You just wrote our bullet points for us. Thanks, Johnny.
Yeah.
We'll get those back to you.
And then the only other thought I had, and this is me partially wearing my, my governance Subcommittee hat as well, is. I, I don't know Jen and David, if we want to, if we need to put together like a really simple short-term investment policy. Something just a little bit of guidance in writing. I mean, we hadn't really gotten that far because I think we were trying to come up with the recommendation, but. It makes sense.
I think that's probably a wise idea. I mean, I, the, the objective here is we're, you know. We're taking advantage of what interest-bearing accounts the bank that we have is. I mean, we haven't really, I mean. And it's on my, it's on my radar, but I don't know when I'm going to get to it. Like, we will, we will obviously need to shop to see if we can get. Instead of three point six two, we get four point eight two. I, I don't know, like, I don't know what else is out there right now. We're basically just taking advantage of what, we're not being stupid with our money. We're taking advantage of what Chase provides for us.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, so as the short-term policy, it seems like would say that we, we invest our money on an ongoing basis. In an account that yields us as much interest as we can or is reasonable, however you want to phrase that. And then when there is an opportunity like this year where we have additional funds, we try to see if we can get some additional investment to build reserves. And plan for the future, so you keep, you know, pretty flexible.
Yeah, no, and that was kind of what I was thinking. Nothing like super detailed or cumbersome, but just something so that if there were questions. You know, we could kind of have something to refer people to in our policy. Simple guidelines.
I'll, I'll take as an action to write those bullet points, share them with Subcommittee, maybe share them with Communications and then share them with you, John. I don't know, we'll figure out a way to do it so that we're not three people on a Google Doc. But I'll take that as an action. Sylvia, do you want to take the short-term investment drafting that?
Sure, sure.
As an action, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you. So I think we just need a motion, David, to approve. An amount, ten million dollars for the three-month CD to an, and a DDA. And moving everything to the DDA in January, is that correct?
I had just one other comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
I could make the motion after I make my comment.
Cool, thank you.
It was also in that policy, Sylvia, I think we should say something around. That the goal is to maximize. You know, interest revenue and at, you know, at reduced risk or no risk to the taxpayer or to the account. So I think, you know, in risk-free, almost risk-free investments, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that we can also maybe just, you know, briefly make note of, you know, that we are limited in the type of investments that we can. So within the, you know, the, the. That are, are allowable, yep.
Okay, if you're ready, I can make a, a motion off of my, the top of my head, or. David, do you have something you want to say?
No.
Okay, so. The, the name of the account is a DDA, is that correct?
A hybrid DDA.
Hybrid, okay, so, so I would move for the board to authorize the Finance Committee. To move the library funds from the current bank account to the hybrid DDA at Chase. And also. Invest in three-month CD. Up to ten million dollars of the reserve funds. Does that sound good? Anything we want to change to that?
Is that good enough? Is that good enough, Kim?
He said, yes.
Okay.
You leave me hanging here. All right, all in favor?
Okay, great. That passes unanimously. Well, thank you guys. That was great work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know that's stressful too, you know?
And thank you for making it clear, clearly understandable. Appreciate that. Okay, next up is Library Policies Review. Pass it off to you, Jen.
All right, thank you. So this evening we have Jamie Kopke, the Programs and Events Department Manager. Here to speak to you about the Canyon Theater Terms of Use Policy. And we also have Tim McClellan, the Public Services Department Manager, to speak to you about. The library rules of conduct and the suspension process. Both of these folks have gathered information from staff. Particularly in their groups because their groups work with these policies the most. And since this is our first foray into policy review with the board. We're really open to your advice and feedback about how you'd like this process to go. When we worked with the Library Commission, one of the kind of goals that they had for policy development. Was that we write them in such a way that they are accessible to most people. So keeping the language simple and less formal. However, the, the policy that you're going to look at around the Canyon Term Theater Terms of Use. Was written by staff and they took a little more formal approach and we didn't really edit it yet because we wanted to hear your feedback. And on the questions that are in the packet on page twelve. And so if you could give us some guidance on how you would like the tone of our policies to be. We'll make sure that when we bring this draft back to you, it, it kind of lines up with that advice. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie to give you a little back, a bit of background on the Canyon Theater Terms of Use. Like the, the pilot program that she's planning with her team and then walk you through the questions.
Thanks, Jen. So if people aren't familiar with how the Canyon Theater has run in the past. Feel free to ask me, but I will give the short summary is that to date, we've had a couple buckets of use for the Canyon Theater. So we have library programs that are run by our staff. And then in terms of community use, we have sponsorships which offer a low-cost way for people to use the theater. But there's a small fee involved for staff time and security and things like that. And then rentals where we charged a, a set fee for renting the theater for private use. So this pilot that we want to launch in July of this year or next year. Is meant to make the theater much more accessible and equitable for the community to use. So we would be offering the theater free of charge for, for all users. So there'd be now two buckets of users, library programs, and then very broad community use. And in the document that we sent, I can share the screen. What we are really looking for at this point is to launch this pilot. We need guidance from the board on a few key questions. That will basically change how we are going to draft the, the final version of the Theater Terms of Use. So the second document, the second page of this was the current draft without some of these questions answered in it. So once we discuss this tonight, we'll go back and add in the correct language. So given that we're looking at making this open very broadly for people, the goals are, like I said, to create. A wonderful community resource that's free. It's unique. There aren't really theater spaces available for free in the city. And then also we really want to use it to help activate the library and bring back potentially some former users, bring in new users. And so we're not necessarily looking for certain attendance goals right now. We're looking for activation of the space. And our goal in the pilot is to reach seventy percent of the main library's open hours as our activation. So that's for library programs, the community use, things that might lead up to the, an event. So like open houses where people are coming in and seeing the theater, doing the walkthroughs, things like that. So these are the main questions. The biggest one is really will users, so these community users, will they be allowed to charge for? Admission, so can they sell tickets? There's some sub-questions along with that, but I think that's the biggest one and a lot of other questions stem from that. Yeah, Doug.
Yeah, so. I, I just go, if I go down to your questions, so I, I have no problem with them, with people charging for. Charging if they want to, you know, have an event and sell tickets to it. Can you go down, as long as it's during the normal hours of the, of the library. They should have to pay if they're going to be outside, pay for like, you know, staff time if they're going to be outside of those hours. This, this cons of allowing, when you say charging for admission, you mean like, we wouldn't charge for them to use the library. But, but they could use the library or the Canyon Theater and charge somebody else. Is that what, that's what you mean, right?
Yeah, we would have no cost for people to use the theater and we'll be absorbing the cost for things like security and staff time moving forward. And even in this initial model, we're looking at, we would have two set, and all of this is, you know, it's a pilot, so we'll be experimenting. in this initial model, we're looking at, we would have two set and all of this is, you know, it's a pilot, so we'll be experimenting with it and iterating to find what the best combination is. But to start off, we're imagining Thursday and Saturday evenings um, will be the evenings that it will be possible for someone to book the theater later. So those evenings, it would be possible to use just the theater space um, until ten PM. And so we're going to build in, security is already covered those evenings, custodial will be there those evenings, um, just to make sure everything flows smoothly. So yes, this would be, um, can somebody sell a ticket? So can you sell a ticket for twenty dollars to your, you know?
Yeah, and so this thing, this thing says on the con that says maybe a barrier to some event organizers who are not equipped with infrastructure. I mean, they don't have to sell tickets, right? I mean, they could do it for free, right? Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I love this idea, to be honest with you, and if they want to sell tickets and they want to keep the revenue, that's great. I, I'd hope that they would remember the Boulder Library Foundation. I don't know if we can you know, have them remember that organization, um, but yeah.
But Doug, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Because I, I generally agree, I'm not troubled too much by charging admission. However, I think we have to be mindful that we could get into a situation where well-heeled organizations start using this free resource as a profit center for themselves at the expense of community groups that really don't have the option to do anything else. And so I'm, I'm concerned about that balance, and I think that's probably why staff raised this. Um, you know, a lot of organizations, you think one of our, one of our local community theater groups that are having so much trouble finding theater space, they need to, to um, charge admission in order to pay for the costs of their production. But on the other hand, you could have a business here that decides they're going to do a huge conference and charge people five hundred dollars to attend, and that's a different kind of thing. So I think that's, that's the balance that we're thinking about. And, and just one comment I had generally before we even get into the specifics of the questions is that I think I mean, in general, I'm, I'm in favor of having this pilot as broad as it can be. But tracking data to see who's using it, and if we can, who's not able to use it. Um, you know, if, if there's a way when we do the application form, we could find out who are you, what, what are you doing, what is, what is it you're using this for, letting people know that this is a pilot and we're trying to get that kind of information. But also maybe having some way for someone to say, hey, I wanted to use the theater and I couldn't because it was booked and find out who those folks are. Jamie, I don't know if you've had a chance to actually do any outreach into the community to like theater groups and you know, like the folks on Kate's list to try and find out what kinds of people might be using this so that we have some data to, to start with and to compare.
Yeah, well, we have the data from current users, um, and we haven't been able to shop this yet because the first, very first question we're going to get from every single group is, can I sell tickets? Um, and um, so we really needed, you know, the policy to be firmed up before we can go out and shop it. Um, but we would definitely be tracking all of the, you know, data along the way about who the users are, when are we finding the high use times are, all of that stuff, because we'll inevitably have to adjust the model to um, to make it work and um, keep growing it and expanding it in the future.
Well, and I think the piece I'm thinking about is the equity piece, and, and just for a bit of history for folks. I was on the commission when this policy was reviewed. I don't know what it was, ten years ago or so, and originally, the library's policy was that only nonprofits could use the theater. Right? Because they're trying to recognize that the library is supposed to be a resource that's free and open to everyone, and I think that's the value that's here. And we had a very vigorous discussion about the fact that whether you're a nonprofit or a for-profit doesn't really determine what your mission is and whether you are a community organization. So we got rid of the nonprofit piece, but we still I think kind of have that struggle of we don't want to just become another facility that someone who's got a lot of resources and could afford to go somewhere else is going to use us and thereby close out people who could really who really don't have another option to use this. Um, I don't know how to, how to tackle that, but I think that's the value that's underneath it.
One way you could do it is have different time periods for when people can sign up to use it. So you have an open window, you know, three months out or a year, you know, for you know, local theater groups or something that, you know, are putting on a production of Midsummer Night Dream and then, you know, then th- those people sign up first and then what's left could go to, you know, I don't know, like uh, TEDx or something, those TEDx talks or something. Um, that could be one thing.
One way too, which we also put in here, question number four, is um, one way you could kind of balance that is to have a limit to the number of hours an individual and organization could book the theater each month. So you don't have, um, you know, like the local, a local dance group booking it every single Thursday. They, they would have a limit of you know, whatever we decide that might be, but um, so that would help balance it. Yeah, what Doug said staging it could help potentially.
I, I mean, I think we can stage it in terms of like, hey, public, the window to sign up for June is going to be, you know, March, whatever, um, but I don't think we can categorize that. Like, I don't think we can say like, certain types of groups, because I, I just, I think that starts to get into a content First Amendment question. So I don't think we can do it that way.
Yeah, and um, you know, we're, we're imagining in this theater, just so everyone knows, is like, it, anybody can book it. So um, there's going to be, um, we're going to need to really make sure the public understands, people assume that anything that's happening in the theater is a library program, we're going to have to really message that this is a community space. And so if there's um, uses that people finds like, less palatable, um, we just have to be really clear that this is a community space and we're not responsible, just like a meeting room. Um, it's available for people to use. And um, so that's, that's one piece of it. And um, yeah, I mean, I think there are ways to kind of help balance that with the, the, the users. Just another thing to keep in mind is like, our theater um, works and it functions, but it is not by any means a state of the art theater. So the most um, what we're going to be trying to sell it for, for uses is like, um, talks, panel discussions, films, um, acoustic music. Um, we are not going to sell it to theater productions, we don't have that kind of capability. And it's, it's like a very um, uh, I would say like minimal in terms of the technical pieces you can do in the theater. And part of the reason we're doing this pilot is like a proof of concept to see if we want to make investments in the future to upgrade the theater and, and do other capital improvements to that space.
Jen, you've been trying to say something.
Oh, I, I just had a quick question for you, Jamie, about moving from the old use, the sort of the three buckets to the, the two bucket pilot. Is, is that a response to feedback that you had gotten that, that sort of that sponsorship fee or that sort of middle tier? Um, was cost prohibitive? I can imagine the rental use was maybe cost prohibitive for some organizations, but were you get, have you been getting feedback from the community that that was? Where did that emerge from? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of a couple of things, like we, we want to make the space well, one, um, more heavily used, it's not incredibly heavily used, part of that is just a staffing issue right now. Um, and two, there are groups that say, um, you know, like we'll have somebody who wants to just read from a book or something, but they're, they're not trying to make money from it, but they're going to go out of pocket a little bit to, I mean, it's not much, we charge thirty dollars an hour right now for staff time and then if it's after hours for security, but even if you have to pay a couple hundred dollars, that feels like a barrier for people, um, for using the space. So partially that, um, and you know, we haven't done, um, I think at the most, we made one year, maybe with all of the sponsorships and rentals, one year was, you know, and we only had a part ten staff member running it, so this wasn't by any means maximized for what it could have been, but it was like thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars at the most was the revenue I've seen the theater make.
Yeah, so Jen, so in terms of, our goal is to activate the space, right? We have one goal, and that's to activate the space. Um, you know, the, the meeting rooms, which are partially for groups, but also for users, which I'd like for you all to think through that question as well, is, are those spaces for the groups that book them, or are they for the people who get to attend to public meeting? And how does that affect the cost? But the occupancy rate in the theater was twenty percent, and the occupancy rate in the meeting rooms hovered around seventy, that's across everywhere. And so the idea was like, how do we activate this space as fully as we possibly can? And that means, you know, driving numbers to that space and making the whole north building a really active area. I, I would, I, I would like to, I mean, I appreciate Johnny's nuanced point of view and Doug's support. I, I really, I feel, I feel like we need to hear from everybody on this issue uh, around allowing people to sell tickets. There, we had it once before in a library related program, um, which is complicated because they, it was not unanimous support. There, they, there was dissent, uh, and uh, that dissent was well stated, uh, and the, the, the question really that was the heart of that dissent was A, it's a slippery slope, and B, uh, meaning, meaning which is the library, is public space intended as a platform for someone to make money or not, right? Like, but is, is public space intended as a platform for someone to make money? Now, it is now, right? So tutors come into the library and use it all the time and they make money, but that's not, there's not, they're not depriving somebody else of access. And then is it, who is it for? Is it for the groups that may book the space, whether that's RE/MAX or it's a theater company? You know, is it for them or is it for the people attending? And I, I think that's, what, what is our hope, I think?
Yeah, can I just finish? So, so part two of my question to Jamie was a, was, the, the reason I'm asking that is that I, I think you laid it out well, David, like, I'm thinking about if we activate the space and someone says I'm going to charge for tickets and no one can afford the tickets to the thing, does that count as an activation, right? Because like, you know, someone's having an event, but only three people show up because their tickets are being charged for, like, could we require the people who are getting the space for free to offer a sliding scale ticket or something that is also equitable and accessible for participants? Because to me, that, like, that feels the issue to me, not that they're making money, it's that that we're saying this is a space for all, but then we're stopping it at the group that's hosting, because they could make, they could make it prohibitively expensive for a library patron.
Right, so with all of our patrons, uh, we, we do not enforce restrictions of attendance, right? So for us, every meeting, every uh, group gathering in this building is for public use, right? So we, we've made clear to previous groups that if they would like to restrict access, that is their responsibility, we would not remove a person from our room simply because they didn't pay the price. If they said they were causing a disruption, then we might remove a person from the room, but we don't. This has come up in the past around political issues, we don't, we don't remove a person from the room because they have different political beliefs of another one. We would not remove a person from the room simply because they didn't pay for the ticket. That would be the responsibility of the group that was booking the space. Um, and that's where it kind of gets complicated too around sponsorship, which I think was the third tranche of groups that we have had in the past. Uh, you know, that is in increasingly fraught with uh, First Amendment kinds of perils, right? Like, so, um, my staffer more than happy to sponsor, and we all would be, right? Out, out boulder or, or something. But it's less likely that we would sponsor the National Rifle Association to book the space. And so it, it becomes uh, fraught with political assumptions around an organization when we have, when we are sponsoring activities. And I, I would prefer that we, you know, begin this move away from sponsoring organizations. We, we would still have partnerships, obviously with like-minded organizations that are mission driven, but less, less sponsorships.
Yeah, I think I see you trying to speak to us.
Me or? I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, but Article um, eleven, section one and two of the Colorado Constitution, Jennifer's heard this now fifty times um, provides that you can't use public property and public funds for the benefit of a private corporation. So, you know, it, it happens all the time on a de minimis level. Um, but it, it feeling to me like allowing somebody to use the theater and then sell tickets is, falls right into that constitutional provision. And it's forbidden. So we even, in all the contracts that, that uh, Jennifer and I are reviewing now, there's all these indemnification provisions where the government is indemnifying the private company and we strike them all. We, we just can't do that.
Can I ask a question, Johnny?
Yeah, Sam, go.
Uh, so just to clarify, Kim, so a uh, a, a private for-profit business to rent the auditorium or make it available to them for free would violate that provision? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm saying to allow them to use the space to sell tickets or to, you know, do woodworking to sell furniture or something like that, that would violate it. You can, you can rent the space to them. So another way to say this is that, that your activity has to have a public purpose. So if you're going to rent the space to them, that has a public purpose because it's helping fund the library. But what you can't do is give them either money to go do their private uh, investments or give them a space and uh, you know, machinery and a maker space to, to create furniture and then go sell it, and that's their business. That, but that's forbidden.
Hmm.
Oh, you're saying, uh, just to be clear, so for-profit organizations, does that sort of moot out this question with respect to for it, like that, like, they can't sell tickets in this space no matter what we say?
It comes really close, you would have to, you'd have to craft something that creates a public purpose, you know, sharing the, the ticket price with them or something.
But if it was a nonprofit, they could raise money using the space or no?
No, no, it's a, a nonprofit is still a private corporation, HOA is still a private corporation.
What about an individual, like a magician just wants to do a show and make some money charging tickets?
Yeah, that would, it technically violates it. But as we all know, it's not going to amount to much. Um, the Constitution itself doesn't have a de minimis standard in it. Uh, but these things go on all the time, you know, until somebody latches a hold of it and wants to go after the library, it's not a big deal. But I would think if you're allowing a theater group to sell tickets, you're kind of throwing it in somebody's face very possibly. And, and David, I think, said it earlier. You know, it's, um, I can't remember the words he used, but it just doesn't feel right to take public property and let somebody kind of monopolize it for their benefit. And that's what the Constitution forbids.
Your example of the maker space, um, that's not for this conversation, but that's concerning because we do have a fair amount of people who run little businesses and use our maker space. So that's maybe a policy we need to review quicker too.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to charge them or, you know, have them get their own materials and we adjust it in some way. But we'd have to create some kind of a pub, public purpose for what we're doing.
So.
Sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Um, so I think we could say that people could charge for tickets if they're going to pay us. Right, Kim? So that we would have to charge a fee and determine what that fee would be. I think.
Yeah, as long as, as long as they're not getting a, a private benefit from it, um, that's no problem.
Right.
Which is our current way we do it, we have a rental, and so we collect the fee and the rental is the only way currently that you can charge for tickets.
Yeah.
Yep, but the free event, even if it's closed to the public and no problem. Um, yeah.
Sam?
So yeah, I just want to, this changes my answer about the admission piece. Um, so Kim, if, if the library charges a rental fee, however nominal, then the user could charge admission or I, I just, I'm not sure I'm understanding the nuance here.
They could charge admission to cover the rental fee. But again, if they get a private benefit out of it, if they charge a hundred dollars a ticket and they give the library ten dollars, they violated the Constitution.
Yeah.
Or we violated the Constitution, they haven't.
So it kind of sounds like whether users are, are allowed to charge for admission and whether users are allowed to sell items during the events, both have to be no.
Right.
If we're going to offer If we're going to offer the space for free, and even if we're not, it sounds like, really?
Yes, that's right.
Well, not, not entirely, Kim. The selling of, the selling of printed materials is a protected First Amendment right. They would, I mean, people that we don't, we don't advertise this, but people could come in and sell books of poetry in the library every single day. There's nothing we can do to stop them. It is a protected First Amendment right. I mean, we can ask to control the time, manner and place, but that's it. But yeah, we can't prohibit them from selling printed materials.
I see, I see a lot of events where, and this may be for equity or it may be to work around something, but a suggested donation, is that allowed under?
The Constitution doesn't say anything about that, but as you know, you know, in the, in the field of religion, that's just rampant and no one ever does anything about it. So I think the suggested donation works. I haven't seen any cases under our constitutional provision, but there's really no difference in the concept.
Do we need to mention that in our policy or can we be silent on whether they collect a donation or not?
You can be.
So that, that is one of our questions, like the one B, because we do have people who that will be a definite question and we have groups that want to set up with their square, you know, their card reader right there and collect it on site. Right now, the policy is you can ask for donations and maybe there's a QR code or something, but you can't set up anything. It can't be like a hard sell.
Okay. So it sounds like.
So I just want to raise here, I mean, what keeps coming up for my mind is JLF, which of course is a literary festival. So it's in the mission of the library. They ask for a suggested donation. They practically speaking sell tickets. Because that, but that's all to go and, and support the event. We also have the Boulder Bookstore and as a partner, selling books from the authors as part of the events. And there's people selling food to the people who come to the festival. I mean, if we take this extremely literally, we are not able to do one of the things that I think most people would say is it's expected purpose of the library.
Yeah. And, and the peddling of books, the, all of those kind of free speech things David was talking about is your public purpose. So although you have this rule that sounds very strict, it has a public purpose exception. You just have to be careful in your rules that you fit it into a public purpose.
And so if I have a public purpose then, and I have people here all day and I have to feed them, I can also stretch this to say, I'm going to have food available that they can buy as they are participating in this.
Yep, yep. Determining that purpose, again, there aren't, there aren't very many cases on this. But determining that public purpose is within your purview almost certainly as a board. So as long as there's some rational link between the ticket sales or the food and, and the library district's purposes, you're okay.
So I think they could charge potentially, so I've gone to like author talks and you pay an admission like ten dollars or something and you get a copy of the book. And the author speaks, that seems like it would be within the, within the purpose.
Yeah, that's, it's close enough, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So we're getting into some gray here, here.
Well, but stop, Doug, stop, because David had specifically asked that we hear from the other board members. So Jennifer and Kara and Sam and Sylvia, can you guys weigh in on this, please?
Um, you know, I mean, it's, it's tricky. I, you know, I was thinking about like my, my my book club, we use the meeting rooms all the time for our, our book clubs and, you know, we we're not technically open to the public. I mean, no one's ever tried to join us. But you know, I, I guess I sort of imagined that the, that renting or, you know, allowing people to use the canyon light, the theater would be a bit like the meeting room, you know, like you have, you can only sign up with at a certain point ahead of time. You know, and it's, it's very simple. I hadn't really unpacked like the idea about charging. So I honestly, I'm, I, right now I'm feeling a little bit ambivalent about it. I don't, I don't have strong feelings either way at this moment.
Well, I just, I guess I, I don't know. To me, it kind of sounds like based on what Kim's saying that we don't have a lot of, like, we don't, there's not a lot of decision-making for us to do here. And it sounds like there's sort of a very limited world in which, you know, there's charging that can happen. And so maybe we need to figure, I mean, I, I maybe we need to figure out, you know, between Kim and staff, what that might look like. But otherwise, it sounds like generally speaking, we can't have organizations charging others to use the space. Sylvia, what you said, are we saying that if someone rents or whatever, if someone reserves the space that they have to whatever use they reserve it for has to be open to the public also?
That's our, that's our policy. I don't know that Sylvia, I mean, all of our meeting rooms are free and open to the public and any public meeting is open to everyone. And so you, you, every, every group that books a space has a right, a legal right to restrict access to just their members. It rare, rarely happens. Most people are not crashing meetings, but it has on occasion happened in the past. And so we don't enforce their restriction of that attendance. That's something that they need to do unless that person causes that disruption.
But they're allowed to, like, they're allowed to say, like, we're having a meeting with the ten of us. Nobody else comes in the room during this hour.
Absolutely, they are allowed to, yeah.
I'm just, I'm not thinking of this for like nefarious. I'm thinking like if someone rents the theater space to like practice a dance troupe or something, you know, like then like, why would they open that to the public? But the, yeah, I mean, I guess I, I, I didn't have an opinion really about charging ticket sales, but it just kind of sounds like we can't allow that anyway. So I'm not sure it matters whether we have an opinion about the subject. And then it sounds like as far as selling books, that there's protections for, you know, like we said, there's protections for printed materials. And so there's not, that's not something that we could restrict. It does sound like we would have to restrict the sale of anything that's not protected otherwise. So again, I'm, I'm feeling like the, the, our decision-making here, I think, is a little bit kind of hamstrung by the Colorado Constitution as I'm understanding, Kim.
And Carol, I'll put in my next status report, just a brief discussion of that provision. So you can see the language is, is fairly clear. And then you can see how you can craft around that. You know, like I think David gave example of the, the, the person who, who takes a space to do poetry reading and then sells books. Well, the poetry reading and the books is your public purpose, period. So it's okay. But when you get into things like, you know, allowing it's hard to think of a great example, but let's say a theater group and they're going to play a movie, movie theater group, and they're going to charge people for that movie and they're going to sell popcorn. That one's harder to fit into your public purpose. I can see where you can. But if you're going to allow that, you just need to, to find that public purpose for each one of those events.
Are there libraries that you are aware of that have policies on this that are well done?
Um, I'll look, we, everybody wrestles with this same thing. And they end up just kind of running off and doing their own. It, it first comes up when there's an effort to have like a sandwich shop and stuff. Like you.
It just, my concern is if we're, if we try to make this, this policy too nuanced, that it will be very difficult to draft and enforce. Where if we just kind of say like, no, you can't charge, that's obviously easier. I just, I just wonder if anyone has sort of done this, if they've threaded, threaded this needle effectively.
It's been threaded a bunch of times. I don't remember any that are particularly effective. But I'll pull, I'll pull some for you and send them along or bring them along.
Can I just offer something here? Because I think currently basically what the library does is say is you can't charge, you can't sell. And if you're going to, then there needs to be a conversation with staff to make a determination if there's a sponsorship or a public purpose. And that is something we could do if staff felt that they wanted to carry that burden and had some guidelines. So I think that to what I'm hearing might be the sort of middle ground in here. If we don't want to close the door completely. But we also don't want to particularly spell something out upfront. So I just toss that into the mix.
I will just add that there's a strong preference for me and probably the staff that'll be running the theater that we have a very clear policy and don't leave a lot of gray area because it, it would, it's just going to put undue pressure on them to make exceptions or create this kind of like bureaucratic check-in, which we already have a few gray area exceptions and we'd prefer that we don't moving forward.
That's great. Thanks, Jamie.
So yeah, clean policy. I hear you, Jamie, and thank you for all your work on this. And I'm excited to think about opening this back up. I would have answered, yeah, it's okay to charge admission until Kim spoke up. I guess either we say you can't or we say you can do suggested donation. I could be okay with either of those. To Johnny's original concern about who's going to use it, I share that concern that well-heeled groups might be more savvy, have the resources to, you know, use it more often. And so I think some kind of policy like the meeting room policy makes sense to me. I don't have a, a number or limit to offer, but I like that idea. And I like the idea of partnerships with different library programs, again, to make this more equitable. And to David's point about who is this for, I, I guess I would like to see people coming to events there that, that look like the entire community. You know, and I, I think some ways we get there are by letting as wide a casting as wide a net about this new availability. Working with partners who can advance equity and inclusion and, you know, and setting some limits on how many times you can use the thing. In terms of the other questions for me, damage deposit. I, I, I like that idea, but I'm not sure how the staff is gonna sort of enforce it or, you know, if that's too burdensome. So I could go either way on that. And then I, I had another whole other question. Are, are users of this going to be? If they want to have an event like, like we often see, opening night for whoever is showing in the gallery that includes food and alcohol. Is that something to think about here? In general, I don't like the idea of having alcohol at, in the library, but.
So it's a good question, Sam. So any nonprofit could can get a special permit for an event license. That's something that currently goes through me and the city, but that will come to you guys. You can, you can set whatever restrictions you want. We are we've, we are letting our, our cultural license, alcohol license that we currently have, which we got eight years ago for a program that we thought was going to work and didn't, and we just haven't used it. We're letting it lapse. So we're surrendering our liquor license. We don't have a, we do not have a liquor license anymore.
Thanks.
Jim, anything you want to add?
No, I wasn't. I was just going to make a remark about whether or not Jamie wanted to be the of a purpose voice. But other than that, it sounds like she really doesn't. I think I, I'm, I, I'm good. I actually do have one comment on the policy. The meeting rooms sort of give guidelines around like a minimum number of people you need to, to be in a meeting in order to book one of the bigger rooms. Like you can't be a single person taking a call in the giant Arapahoe room. I don't know if the Canyon Theater should have something like that too. So you don't have like two people having a meeting in the theater. There should be some minimum number of ten, five or something number of people. But I don't know if that would be too restrictive. Just so that you don't end up with the sort of people using it for their individual purposes.
Yeah, I mean, that is a possibility right now.
Yeah.
To look at the theater, if they think they're going to have forty people, we tell them, you should really look at the Boulder Creek Room to make good use of the space. In this model, right now, we wouldn't say that, but we certainly could to try and like focus it more on high, high like attendance events. We also don't know how many people are going to take us up on this offer too. So we might be limiting what could be a place for people to grow. We might be limiting our use.
So how about if we walk through each of these questions and we all just weigh in on them so that staff has clear guidance on, on where we are. The first one, will users be allowed to charge for admission? I'm hearing consensus that no. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think we can't, it sounds like.
Anybody disagree with that? Okay. And then I think with the library's partners, there is the possibility of doing something where you're asking for a contribution for a nonprofit and there's a library purpose. But that's a different world than the world we're talking about here. Is that a correct statement? David, is that correct?
It, it is in my mind. I mean, if, if we don't, it's a slippery slope, right? So like, I think we would all agree that like if somebody wanted to do a suggested contribution with a QR code on the stage for building a school in you know, South Africa, we'd all be fine with that. We, we would be less inclined to agree to somebody to use the stage to promote a QR code to arm insurgents in Tunisia, right? Like that's not going to make us comfortable. So I think it would be better if we restricted that use to partner organizations.
And that will be a separate policy then. That's not in this policy, right?
I don't know how we fill that in, Jamie. What do we do now? Because we also, we don't, we don't allow people, we do, same. Like again, it's like in meeting rooms, you could do it with a suggested donation with a QR code. We did it for that one thing that was like, I don't remember high school program around photography or something like that. And they wanted to do charitable contributions where they put up a QR code.
Yeah. So right now, I mean, the whole partnership thing is also a little slippery because the way we're defining it, and I, I mean, the library staff who are going to run the space is in order for it to be a library program, there has to be some work group, some staff who give some time to help co-planning part of the event and also then being at the event. So beyond the theater staff who are there purely to like run the tech, a library's staff work group has to kind of believe in the intent enough to be involved. And that's what we'll deem it a library program. So if we're imagining like, oh, well, we just have a partnership without Boulder, but we're just letting them use the theater, that they would completely fall in that second bucket. So of community user, unless it's a partnership in terms of like there's library staff involvement. And that's how we're trying to keep it very clear and separate so that it, it also helps us create guidelines for library staff to follow for when we do publicity for certain events and why we don't do publicity for other events. So we're really trying to just like stick to those buckets. So saying partnership, but not saying that it's a library program, I think could be, create a tangle for us.
So what's the question, Johnny?
Well, I appreciate that. My, my question is just for, for purposes of what we're seeing before us tonight, which is simply use of the theater. It seems to me the answer we have is you can't tell, sell tickets and you cannot collect contributions. Right? Because we like, we lack that linkage to a public purpose. And the only way we're going to find a public purpose is if there is a partnership of some kind with the library where the library has found a public purpose, if I understand Kim correctly. So I'm just trying to draw that bright line, David. I hear you being kind of squishy in here. And, and so that's why I'm, I'm just getting confused and trying to get some clarity here.
Now, I think what Jamie described is, you know, so the partner organizations, we're starting from scratch. We have some, but not what we're in this area where library, library programs would be ones that come under the auspices of like, it's Boulder Reed's staff that are supporting, bringing in a literacy and free speech event in partnership with C U, right? Like that's a they didn't ask for money, but it was a free event, but that was, that was the means by which that program happened.
And we are going to have a separate policy on partnerships, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's something I think we could set aside for this and you guys could. for this, and you guys could think about when you've put your heads into that a little bit more, if that's something that needs to be referenced in this in some ways. But from what you're asking us tonight, I think we're saying we have to say, no, there's no non-cash, there's no contributions, and there's no charging of fees.
Yep.
Doug?
Uh, so like if Boulder thespians put on a production of Rent and said donate to Boulder thespians, the the suggested donation for tonight is five dollars, that's a no-no.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Our preference would be that we book them as a program. We would book the Boulder thespians to do the program and give them a thousand dollars to put on rent.
Got it.
Okay, so then number two, the theater users have been commi- permitted to sell books. Um, books, it sounds like are okay. Other items sound like they also fall into the public purpose problem, right? You're muted, Kim.
As long as that event where it's happening falls into your public purpose, which of course a book event would and everything.
So it sounds like that also falls into this kind of program partnering world.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Um, the damage deposit, um, I personally would prefer to see something where we're just it's tied to rules of conduct, I assume under our rules of conduct. If you break something, you're liable in some way. Um, a damaged deposit seems like a lot of hassle to me. Others? Other board members, what do you think? Sylvia, you just stretching or raising your hand?
No, I was just, I'm, I I would be fine with not having a responsible damage deposit.
Anybody who feels strongly we should have a damage deposit? Okay, and then the final one, should there be a limit on use? Um, I think there should be a limit. I'm not sure if hours is the right um amount or events, you know, there might be some people who have an event that's longer and others that are shorter, so just think about what that might be, but I I think a limit makes sense. How about the rest of you? Yes, nodding, anybody who thinks the limit does not make sense?
Um, I'm just going back to um Jamie's response to my question earlier about should we ask them to have a minimum number of participants? I sort of feel like if we give a limit to the number of hours, we can't, like, we can't collect the data from the pilot. We might need to see if people actually exceed those hours. There might be a, there might be a acoustic music group that needs more time to rehearse in the space than you know, people who wanna just have a meeting. So I don't, I don't know if we put a limit on the number. I I'm curious what Jamie think of this, like, maybe we test to see if people do abuse it. And in the after eighteen months, we're like, oh, well, we need a limit, you know, or um, and kind of collect that data rather than set the, set an arbitrary limit out front, but I just, I, that's just my opinion.
Um, yeah.
I think, just a minute, Jen, I think you and I are saying sort of the same thing. I think there should be a limit. I'm not sure hours is the correct way to express that limit. Because as you, as like you, I think there may be some groups that are using, you know, that to do what they need to do, they need more hours than others, so it's events.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking like no limits or minimums while you're doing a pilot just to see what what data comes back in from the actual usage. Um, which could lead to, certainly could lead to some bad stuff. I mean, some overuse, but I feel like that's kind of the point of doing the experiment is to sort of figure out if people are gonna use it a lot or not, or not use it because they can't get enough hours to use it to to make it worth their while, or or not hours or whatever we use, choose as the limit.
So Jamie.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we could potentially leave this piece out of the policy completely and let it be more of like a procedure that staff is kind of evaluating as we go, and then at the end of the pilot, we could look at it and see if there's a formal recommendation for kind of setting some sort of limit, whatever that might be moving forward. Um, so that that might be one way to do it. Um, that would allow us to track things, but not have it firmly written in a policy where we have to keep coming back to you all every three or four months to try and adjust the policy because the pilot's not working correctly.
And and personally, I think that would be fine. I I'm still concerned that you're not gonna know who who you're not getting unless we have a way of collecting data from people who said, hey, I really wanted to use this venue and I couldn't. Um, so I think if you can put some thought into whether there's a way on the booking website to have somebody say, oh gee, I wanted to use it, but I couldn't, you know, otherwise we'll never see who's who's being closed out. Maybe I'm being.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Like, maybe on the actual form when someone has to check, like, I will only use this for ten hours or something. Have another checkbox that says, I'm, yeah, like I wait or some checkbox that says like, I actually can't now use this because there's a ten hour. Would you please evaluate, reevaluate? I think that's a good idea, John.
Another thought I had on that was that you limit during peak, probably peak use hours. And then you're probably gonna have periods like Tuesdays between, you know, ten and mm, two that nobody's gonna be in there, you know, like, and then we'd say if you wanna book it in these non-peak hours, you can book it every day, any day if you're gonna use it, you know, I, you know, that that would be another thought. Um, but if you're gonna get a Thursday night till ten, that's probably gonna be more, you know. But but we, I think we can wait on that, this, this is another thought.
So are we saying no limits to how often you can use it during this pilot period?
I'm not saying no limits.
We're discussing it, we're just discussing it.
Yeah, so so let's go, well, let's go go down and see where people are. I think Jen was, Jen, were you saying no limits?
Yeah, I mean, I I was saying quick limits and it potentially creates constraints that keep people from using it.
Okay, Sylvia, how about you?
I think if we had like really like broad limits, you know, maybe that'd be a place to start, and my worry is that um you know, one or two really savvy groups are gonna take advantage and then, you know, we're not actually having it open to the public because uh um, because we're not restricting some use. So I would say like, but not like, not like um, like little limits, I mean, like a very broad limit so that there could at least be the option of having other people use it.
So that's vague. Do you, do you mean like eight hours or do you mean three days?
I mean, like, three days, three days, three, three events. That sounds reasonable.
Three events in what time period? Cause I think right now, folks are limited in meeting rooms to using them once a month, for example.
No, it's eight hours a month.
Yes, but but you can only, well, yeah.
Oh, oh, is that what it says?
Yeah.
Well, eh, to keep it in conformity with what, you know, somewhat similar to what we're doing on the meeting room side, I mean, like ten, twelve hours a month.
Okay, Kara?
Yeah, I guess I'm not I I'm not personally as concerned about this. I feel like until we know more about how the spaces are isn't being used. Um, like I guess, I think right now, I I feel like any limit is gonna be a little bit arbitrary, cause we don't know how people are gonna use the space yet, or who isn't, or who might get blocked out, or you know, I mean, cause there's, there's like the extreme part of my brain that's like, what if someone decides to make this like a protest and they just like block out all the rooms? Like for the whole month, so nobody can use it for some reason. Um, I don't think that's gonna happen. But, so I mean, but I, so I I think just at right this moment, I I don't know that I know enough to set any kind of limit. So I guess if we have a limit that's been effective for the meeting rooms, we could mirror that, but um it it's a different kind of space. Um, so I mean, I I'd be more inclined to limit like the number of events than to set a number of hours because the space is different, but um, I'm, I've kind of feel like, given the nature of a pilot, I wonder if maybe we don't set a limit or we set a very high limit. Um, and then see how it goes and make sure we're collecting as much data we want it, as we wanna be collecting, so we know you know, it, so we can see if an, if an i- an issue emerges during the pilot.
Okay, great. Sam?
Um, yeah, I think you constrain use potentially either way. Um, and so I I would favor some kind of per-use limit. I I don't have a number to to offer right now.
And Doug?
Uh, I like kind of what Sylvia and Kara and Jen said, like, set it at like fifteen or whatever. Twenty hours of a month and and see what kind of data we collect. For now, that would be my suggestion. If it looks like people are abusing it right away, uh, which I don't think will happen, but then we'll pivot.
And so Jamie, do you feel like you need to have that bright line drawn in the policy, or you can just leave that vague and then use your discretion until we see what happens?
We'll bring, we'll bring back something, I think, but uh, some minds and you can react to it. We'll have something more specific.
Yeah, I think, I mean, because we have it in the meeting room policy, it feels like it would be good to include it. Um, and I can go back and talk to the team. I I think they also think that there should be some sort of limit. We have a few groups who are come in and they're very needy, so for their, what might be a two-hour event, they wanna do ten hours of pre-event. All sorts of things, walkthroughs, rehearsals, second rehearsals. Um, and I don't know that in this model, we're gonna be able to do that kind of um, customized service for everybody and still make it open to everyone too, so.
Great. Um, okay, do you have what you need then on this policy?
Yes, so we will work on incorporating the language for the decisions that you all made, and then we'll put it on a future agenda to look at the final policy before it's approved.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, and thanks very much to us down for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, you wanna switch us to the rules of conduct?
I thought that was gonna be a short one. Okay, well, um.
I'm so sorry, could I suggest maybe we have just a li- a short break?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, let's do it, let's take. Okay, let's come back at um seven fifty-five.
Okay.
Hey, and Jamie, while we're on break, just one question. On uh, the current Canyon Theater Terms of Use Policy number seven. I, th- th- there's just to me a lack of clarity there. Organizers may post or distribute materials at the door of the venue or on the community bulletin board only within B P L D?
I, so I think that's probably worded poorly, but what we're trying to say is you have two spots, you can talk about your event, which is our community bulletin board, which is where everybody can share information. And then you'll be able to post your information when your event is happening at the front of the theater, but we have people come in and they stick their flyers in the gallery and stuff, and we have to take things down. So um, it's really just meant to more like mark exactly where you're allowed to put things.
And that makes sense. It was the only within B P L D that was throwing, you know, cause it's the whole district, so.
Right, okay, okay, we can reword that before we bring it back.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, I think I'm gonna head out. Thank you all so much.
Great, thank you, Jamie.
Bye.
Say, Jen. You said, you said you thought that was gonna be the easy one. That's the one that I was thinking of last week, when I said like some of the policies will go to the heart of what public libraries do. That is the one that I had in mind, like I knew it was gonna be complicated, not, maybe not as complicated as it turned out to be, but it's a hard one.
Yeah, and they didn't have much uh background.
Yeah, we landed in the right place, I feel like.
Yeah, I think so.
And I, I think the appetite for experimentation is great, but like I'm, I'm, I, when it comes to making money out of us, like I'm, I feel really, I guess I feel really old.
Or having staff have to make determinations about who can use or not. Kim, are there any um requirements for rulemaking for districts? The city has a pretty extensive process in where we have to post changes for a a comment period and all that business. Do we have to do that?
There's no legal requirements. Um, I don't remember if there's something in the bylaws that that we adopted. Um, ultimately, there probably should be because you wanna have as as much of the board present each time as possible, but that can be done later. But there's no legal requirement, no posting, no, nothing like that.
Okay, that's good. Um, it sounded like they might wanna have a public hearing before they approve each policy. I don't know if that's what they all agreed to, but I think Benita recommended that.
The Benita thing, we did not discuss that further.
Okay.
And there's nothing in our bylaws that addresses that.
Okay.
Um, so Kim, if you think we should put something in there, could you maybe propose some language or direct us, um, since Sylvia is working on bylaws changes right now?
Yeah, and I'll put something in the status report, but you might wanna just wait until you have all of your, or a big chunk of them adopted first. Because it can really slow things down, but.
Okay, so right now, Article twelve is titled, actually, um, amendment to bylaws or policies uh must be in written form and received by all trustees at least ten working days prior to the first reading.
Yep.
And then the rest of it just speaks to bylaws.
So they need it ten days before?
That's what it, that's what I'm gonna say right now.
So we would provide it to them in the packet on the sixteenth, but we wouldn't revisit it until the thirtieth, I guess.
Yeah, that's what that means, and that means for everything.
Well, you can provide notice outside of the packet. It's just ten days in advance, so you can send an email to all board members saying we're gonna do this.
Oh, just that we're gonna do it, not, not the actual content?
Yeah, it's just notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and it has to be written, so, so putting it in that um perpetual agenda that you've created is not notice enough?
That's an argument, I think that's probably okay at this stage. And then again, once everything's. And then again, once everything's in place, then you want to firm those up because.
Yeah.
Then you're changing expectations every time you change a policy.
Yeah, because we showed them the schedule. Although that could change, I mean.
Yeah, once we figure out how we can handle the um online advanced planning agenda. You know, we need to set it up in a way that you have access as well as, and then you can probably use that as a way to to give notice as well. But it's certainly easy to drop an email and say we're gonna take up this policy. Um, you know, maybe the beginning of the month when you're closer to knowing which ones it is. So, who is Chris? Chris's iPhone?
That's Marge, I think.
Yeah, hey Johnny, it's Chris on the move, picking up my daughter.
Oh, hi, Chris.
Hey.
Welcome, so are we all back? Everybody here, Sam? Jen isn't showing up on my.
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, there you are. Okay, great. All right, Jennifer, taken away for policy number two.
Uh, page seventeen in the packet is uh the next uh set of policy information that we'll go through, and this is our library rules of conduct and suspension process. So any person that violates the rules of conduct may be asked to leave the library for a period of time depending on what it is they have done, um, or how many, how many times they have done it, uh, that sort of thing. Um, so we're bringing this to you tonight, um, primarily because we have we're able to simplify it quite a bit. Um, the city's uh language and the rules refers a lot to the Boulder Revised Code, and there's lots of process around appeal. It has to go to a court, there's a deadline for um the court to hear the, hear the appeal, that sort of thing. Um, and so what um Tim has done is he has collected input from the staff who who are faced with enforcing these rules on a regular basis. There wasn't any substantive uh changes from the staff at this time. The rules were, I think they were reviewed about a year ago, so they're pretty, they're, they're working well. So the changes are um really just removing the references to the Boulder Revised Code. And uh changing the appeal process. So the appeal process uh we're proposing would, um, appeals would go to David. And David would meet with the individual and determine whether or not we're upholding the suspension or um allowing the person to come back before, before the suspension expires. And then we also wanted to share with you how we, how staff and this um contract security officers determine lengths of suspension. So we have a set of guidelines that we crafted and we reviewed with the commission. Probably, it's been probably three or five years ago, um. Uh, so that we're consistent in how we apply the the different lengths of suspension. So I'll turn it over to Tim. Um, there's a set of questions that we need to walk you through on page seventeen. Tim?
Yeah. Everyone, thanks for having me back. Um, so yeah, the questions are on page seventeen and go carry over on to page eighteen of the packet. Um, talking about kind of the three attachments. So as Jen said, not necessarily changes to the rules, but more just our process. Um, so question number one that we would love your input on, does the board agree with the staff recommendation regarding the process for appealing suspensions? So again, simplifying the city's process uh where uh people have a deadline within ten days of the original suspension, they have to submit some paperwork. This process is pretty convoluted and confusing too for for individuals. They have to come to the library, pick up the suspension packet and then still submit uh their intent to appeal the the process. So uh it's pretty convoluted at the moment. So this simplifies it, they just have to fill out an online form or drop off a physical uh notice of appeal to the main library. They can mail it to David or they can fill out this web form um for that. So thoughts on attachment A, it's towards the bottom of attachment A, if you're looking at that, any feedback on that?
Board members? Works for me. Um, it works for me. I just wondered like, how long does that right of appeal go? Like, could they come back after like months and months and try to get it appealed? I'm just curious, um, because there are various timeframes.
Yeah, so if we suspended them for a hundred eighty days, three hundred sixty-four days, they could come back months and months after the fact. If there's to feel, if their suspension was still active, they could appeal at any point.
Could they appeal more than once? Should we put a limit on how many times they could appeal?
I think our intent was just once, but that's not, that's not clearly defined.
Yeah, seems like a good idea to do that.
They may have to wait maybe between appeals or something, so many days.
So one appeal per suspension, right?
No, I think he's suggesting that.
No, I'm not suggesting, I'm just, if they, if you're gonna allow more, this, whatever you guys feel comfortable, just limit it, I'd say, to the a number of appeals.
Other questions? Anybody have problems with this process? Yeah, Jen?
I just have one question around what um protects David and staff from um, like claims of discrimination based on like dimensions of identity. Um, I mean, it doesn't really talk about like, what is considered during an appeal? Just I just sort of clicked on the little form, um, but I I wonder if it's worth either reiterating our, we don't discriminate. You know, we're, we're not trying to discriminate, um, and also take that into account when we're working on our appeals or something. Language around that, just so that everybody's protected from being accused of that.
And and Jen, we had a, one of the big districts out here um had a, just a bunch of these appeals. And they would, they went to the board and it became a nightmare because the, there was no standard for what they were appealing.
Ri- right.
Maybe some language that says the appeal is, the only appeal is to deny that you did what you're accused of or. Anything, but.
Yeah.
It gets really complicated when somebody's mother comes to you and says to David and says, no, let my son back in because he's got mental problems and this wasn't really his fault and that girl teases him all the time and blah, 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 blah. Um, yeah, it's a bad position to be in.
And when we talked about this in the context of um appealing uh decisions about censoring books, I think at that point, I remember you saying that you recommended um restricting the basis of the appeal to basically what I would call the administrative record, the record that had been made during the. Is that something we should be doing here too, that there's a record that's made in the suspension?
Yeah, if there's a record, that would be great. So that's what we did at this other district was to say uh, nobody comes to the Board of Trustees uh for the appeal, they send the record and the board looks at the record and makes sure that the process was followed, and if it was followed, they uphold the appeal.
And so here we're talking about the director, not the board. Your advice would be the same?
Yeah, 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 because otherwise, I mean, I don't know if David wants to be put in that position where he's, you know, uh, people are pulling at his heartstrings and and, you know, it's okay, but it makes it very difficult.
Yeah. I mean, that happens now, right? So it's, it's not about the content, it's about the process, whether or not the process was followed. So in a recent instance, I was contacted outside of the cycle uh where a person was suspended for a year for an infraction that we would ordinarily say was a month, right? And so he had already been gone for, I think, what, ten, five? And we had him.
Yeah.
With you, he wrote a letter and we allowed him back in the library. And it was not clear, we, we talked to the people who had suspended him, it was not clear why he had been suspended for a year at the time, I think it was. I don't know, I think there was no grounds for doing so, I mean, other than the fact that maybe he was like something, right, like something made them do a year. So that, in that case, we said, yeah, you can come back.
Yep, yeah, so maybe adding something to this, to the appeal that what they need to put in their written appeal is the reason the suspension is, should be shorter or or is, was incorrectly granted, given in the first place, something like that.
Doug?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, that, my, my concern is actually for your safety, David. Uh, I would say it would only be a written appeal. Um, we don't need a new interaction, I, in my view. Um, and they can file a written repeal based on the record. Uh, it, or the, and, and the appeal would be reviewed based on the record, and anything would have to be in writing. That would be my suggestion. I don't know if that's too draconian, but that's. I, like, you, you're not a court, and so, like, you don't have a bailiff and you don't have any of that stuff. So I, that's my concern.
Tim could, Tim could be bailiff.
So then that suggests that we also need to be in a position to give the record to the person who is suspended. So they see the basis on which the suspension has been made. So we may need some reference to how they, how they get access to that.
We provide that to them now.
Yeah, there's a form in there, right?
Yeah.
Surely there's more information beyond just this form, David? I mean, all that they're doing is checking the box. There's behaving in such a way that disrupts another person's use of the library. There's some background that the staff makes with that.
They, yeah, they, we do subsequently write up a report in case of each incident. We write up incident reports for things where there are not suspensions, so we do have an incident report on file, and obviously, we would have them appeal that. And that report, you know.
One has a space for that too. There's like a block about additional information.
Yeah. So I'm hearing that people are comfortable with the process and these are suggestions to refine that, correct? Okay. All right. So Tim, did you want to tee up the next one?
Yeah, question number two. Currently, with the city's process, we're limited to a maximum of three hundred sixty-four days for a suspension, regardless of what happens. Um, so there's occasionally instances um where there's been acts of violence perpetrated against staff or sexual offenses inside the library, but we've still been, uh, our hands have been tied in, in uh going kind of above and beyond and issuing a suspension for longer periods of time. The city has historically relied on kind of the legal due process uh in any um, I don't know, restrictions. Like if someone was put in jail for acts of violence, they assume that that would take care of them not coming into our facilities um during that time. But we had an incident that happened uh September twenty twenty-two uh where a, an individual assaulted a staff member on the second floor. Um, they were in jail for thirty or sixty days. Um, so that did not cover beyond our three hundred sixty-four day suspension um for this individual. So would you all support um David or the executive director being able to issue or extend the length of suspension beyond three hundred sixty-four days? In kind of these rare instances where those uh situations come up?
Who wants to dive into that one?
So is the idea that it would be at the discretion of David and staff as to what the suspension would be beyond three hundred sixty-four days?
Uh, we'd probably set a timeframe that was somewhat reasonable. So what we've done in the past is we relied upon the courts, right? So if, and that was a, you know, a backbanded way around the city's uh suspension of three hundred sixty-four days. I worked with the courts and asked the prosecutor for a suspension consecutive with whatever sentence they received. Which in some cases worked, in one or two cases worked, in a couple of others, if not, right? So for assault, because the guy apologized, he got ninety days. And so basically, I, I would have lost on appeal. Had he appealed his suspension of three hundred sixty-four days, I would have lost and the courts would have shortened it to ninety days. Um, we're moving away from the court, using the courts. But uh in that instance, I think for staff safety and morale uh, a three year or a five year suspension would have been warranted.
And so in response to Kara's question, then it sounds like the answer is yes, we're, we're saying it's the discretion, excuse me, of the director and staff to determine what the amount of extra suspension is. Right? Is that what I'm hearing, David? David?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes, yeah. And we're not talking about like in def, you know, I don't know, like in the in the event of a sexual crime, that's where it's worked in the past, where the courts would, you know, it was a sentence, right? So somebody might get five years, uh, and that was, that would, I don't think we'd have a suspension longer than that. Um, I suppose that somebody could get twenty years, we're not gonna have to worry about them coming back, so I don't have to um suspend them. But in the case where violence occurs, and this is, you know, direct harm, the staff member was out on disability longer than the person was in jail. And that seemed wrong to me.
So do we have any issues with with definitions here? I mean, before violence and a, and sexual offenses would go through a court and a legal process there. Um, do we have to worry about defining either of these terms now that there's no court in the mix?
I thought they were defined.
Yeah, they would be criminal acts, Johnny, so they, this would be resulting in a likely, it would go to court and result in a conviction, we would. But that, that, that would not determine our suspension, right? So if you went to court for assault and got thirty days, we could still have the right to suspend you for three years.
Yeah, I, it's the timing um that I wonder about. So the act of violence occurs on day one, or the sexual assault occurs on day one, presumably you suspend them on day one.
Yeah.
And then they go through the court process and it isn't determined whether it's a violation for some months down the road.
I see.
Um, that's, that's why I'm wondering if we need to have a definition. Um, and, and I, I may be too much in the weeds on this. Kim, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, my, the only thing I keep thinking is you're, you're really defining your own rules and regulations here. So whatever the court does is neither here nor there.
Right.
You're, you're a branch of government and you're setting your own rules.
So is, is a sexual offense someone using language that another person finds offensive?
If that's how you define it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question for David, really. I mean, that's where I was going with this definition. Um, because before, I think it was defined by the city code.
Right.
It's not.
No, I, that's not how we, but so do you, if you would like us to define it, it would be anything that would be uh crimes of sexual violence or perpetrated against a minor, that's how we would look at it, like anything perpetrated against minor. For instance, somebody photographing children in the bathroom, uh, that would result in a longer suspension, as it would likely result in a longer criminal.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'm comfortable with however you want to define it. I think we probably just should have a definition in case.
So, yeah, perhaps we should say that, yeah, good, good advice.
And I think the only thing, I guess, I mean, whatever is decided upon, I mean, presumably the form will get updated. Because right now the form just kind of starts with threats of violence and then goes down, and this is kind of a tier above all of that. So presumably there'd be just something added to the form to identify, you know, when it's like this crim, this criminal category.
And Sylvia, you're referring to the Suspension Links Guidelines document, attachment B?
I was, yeah, well, I was looking at attachment B, and then I kind of went down to the, the actual guidelines, yeah, attachment B, right? So it starts with general timelines and then it starts with threat of violence. And then, you know, going up this highs through sixty-four and then going down from there.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
Okay. Anything else on this one, guys? All right, so the next three, two questions, Tim, you want to tee those?
Yeah, yeah. So just asking if anyone has input or questions um about just the general rules of conduct. So as Jennifer said, I've been working with um staff who use these rules at each of our location's security to see if anyone had any feedback. We revise these more heavily last year in October um twenty twenty two and they've been uh working fairly well for staff who who need to enforce the rules. Um, every day, but it's these fourteen rules um that we have listed in our rules of conduct at the moment. So any feedback on any of these fourteen rules?
Well, I've never been totally comfortable with the sleep one, going back to when this came to me when I was on the library commission. Um, I understand why it's there. Um, and uh, but I I just hope that the enforcement of it cuts people a little slack. I'll just say that.
Yeah, we typically give people at least three warnings before we ask them to leave for the day. So warning number one, we just alert people that you can't sleep in the library. Number two, we suggest they get up and walk around. Number three, we tell them if it happens again, then we'll ask you to leave for the day. So it's incredibly rare that this actually results in any sort of suspension um or paperwork. Um, there's times that we ask people to leave for the day, but even it's it's rare that it even escalates to that point.
Thanks, Tim.
So the question I have is the one that I raised um on email. Um, and and I don't know if that's something we can address tonight, but. Because the library's purview is now extending outside the buildings. I think we need to be thinking about. How the rules of conduct apply on library property and thinking about. The potential liability to the library. From activities that happen outside. Right now, if something happens outside, I think we can just say. Not our problem, it's city property, but now we've got a piece in here. Um, and so, Kim, I don't do you have some advice about where to go with this? I know in the quick look, I looked at some at some other libraries and some libraries just extend their code of conduct. Rules outside. If we do that, that complicates the sleeping question even more for us.
Yeah.
I believe our rules are extend outside of the building. Under the definitions, there is. There is a description of. Uh, they they cover the underbelly of the main library and they extend to the parking lots and the curbs.
All all the way to curb, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that then could be some problematic language at main because we have a lot of people sleeping that are in violation. Um, and we think we need to be thinking about this now in terms of the branches, too, because we'll be outside there as well. And again, I'm advocating for a position here, just raising this is something that I think we need to think about.
I I I I have that issue too about the sleeping. I. I think we keep these. I personally think we just keep it. As is to give the staff as much flexibility as possible and this came from them. I think, you know, um, as long as we're not violating. Okay, the constitution or any any laws, I think, um. Uh, you know. We do that as well. I, you know, I spend a lot of time in there. I see some people dozing off, but. You know, it's not prevalent, not super prevalent. Yeah. But outside, I see people sleeping around the building, but again. They're not bothering anyone usually. Someone right here, right click the screen, Jennifer, I think, or whoever's sharing. Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, um, well, I I will just, I mean, I I. I'm comfortable with the policy as is. Obviously, there are situations uh outside of each of our buildings where. It may get out of control and in which case we we tend to take a distance and. Uh, call whatever the authorities or report an incident that, you know, I I don't believe it is our desire to have. You know, downtown is a wholly different thing, right? But uh. George Reynolds, we were not, we would we would not, we would do, we would do what we could to discourage people from camping and or living on the space. And frequently, you know, sleeping checks are. The only manner we have of discovering someone being unconscious, right? And so that's something that we would also report to EMTs. Um, and I. I don't know, I haven't worked at Reynolds that many times, but I think the last time I was at Reynolds. That was indeed the case. There was a woman unconscious. In the grassy area in the parking lot and I asked her if she could wake up and she was not not. Just and so we call, you know, EMTs.
Johnny, you're on mute, sorry.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm not trying to focus here on sleeping. I'm I'm asking the question about whether there is any additional liability. To the district now that we have outside spaces that we need to address in these rules of conduct.
Yeah, just by that, do you mean that we the community members would ask for the library to enforce uh sleeping? Ban on library property? Is that what you heard?
Can you take sleeping out of your brain for the moment?
Whatever, I could say.
Imagine somebody attacks somebody outside the library. Or a patron is hurt outside the library. Now that's the city's problem, right? They'll sue the city. We're now irresponsible for that space to the lease. So that that's the train I'm think trying to think of is. Whether there is additional liability and whether there's anything we need to be doing in the code of conduct as it stands right now, this applies. Outside, what does that mean? And that may be just something that needs to be thought through. Maybe it's fine. Um, but it is a change in circumstances and there is some additional liability there for all kinds of things.
Like, for example, you could have somebody. Attack somebody else and because we have a rule and we didn't enforce it, they could turn around and sue the district.
Right. Right.
Yeah, so we are looking at that type of liability insurance when the shopping of the insurance, I'm I was hopeful that we'd have something back tonight, but I don't. Especially in cases of. Again. S- sexual or violent nature.
Is it as simple as adding the words? Inside and inside and outside to some of these provisions? And then maybe thinking about whether there's something different outside that should be addressed at each of the branches?
Well, possibly based on, I mean, what Jennifer pointed out is that facility. Means interior and exterior. Facility isn't used specifically all the time in here. Spaces are different things. Um, you know, and again, I don't want to make a huge big deal out of this. I'm just thinking like a torts lawyer right now, so. Wondering if there's anything we could do. I don't know. I mean, could Kim, could you maybe look through this and see if you could you see some exposure? If you don't see any exposure? That wouldn't be handled by the insurance, I I think we're done. Um, but that's just my biggest issue.
Um, I have a quick question not related to this, if if we're.
Yeah, please, Jen.
Um. One of the things, the number ten, um solicit donations, Tim. I know the Boulder Library Foundation does that in the Canyon Theater once a year. Um, and I wondered now that we're opening up the Canyon Theater actually to. You know, more with the community, if. If that is still, do we still wanna, is that still a rule? Like, we we do not want people having fundraisers in that space. Um. Cause that sort of is a little bit different, I feel like, than the suggested donation and the ticket question that we just had with Jamie. Um, so that was just my. Quick thing is if these are working in conjunction with, um, good night, sweetie. I love you too. We, um. We might just want to think about the how those work together.
Sure. This one in practice has been more about people asking like panhandling inside the library. Or asking people for cigarettes, that sort of thing. So soliciting more for their own personal interest as opposed to any any medium. It certainly implies for that at the moment, but I think we could be more explicit with that if we change the rules for the Canyon Theater.
Okay. Makes sense. Maybe it's like, don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to go back to this facility versus, so there's two definitions in here. Uh, we probably should just clean this up. Uh, because. Facility means one thing and library means another, so. You know, we should be, if we mean like no sleeping in a facility, which is what this says. Or or that means the whole area, including the parking lot. Uh, and then library, or if we mean like no. Um, tobacco use in a facility, that would be in the parking lots as well. So like, let's just, I think. Tim, just go through here and and where you use library realizes it's a defined term and. And what it means and where you then where we use facility also and um and I think. From my perspective on this liability issue, Johnny. Our security is patrolling inside and outside the buildings. And and enforcing these rules, so. Um, in my mind, we're doing our. You know, what a normal, reasonable custodian of these properties would do. So I feel like. You know, from a liability perspective. The liability of a freak thing happening, but we're not negligent on these these areas. So I think we're okay. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, is there anything else on this policy then, folks?
So next steps for us would be what to. Um, have Kim review this for additional. Comments and perhaps look at cleaning up the definitions somewhat or clarifying them?
Yes, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
I would on the C, attachment C, I would just say add that, add the incident report. To attachment C as an attachment. Not, you know, as a space for it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Tim, and thanks to staff and thanks you for all your work and actually working with these rules, because I know it's not easy.
Sure, thanks, everyone.
Okay, I think our next item then is the um. Board work plan for twenty twenty four. Um, Sylvia, I think you were gonna take the lead on this one.
Yeah, um, so it's in the packet. Um, and I really recommend, you know, if you get a chance to kind of carefully look through it. Um, the biggest thing, I guess, I would just point out, just generally is A, thanking Johnny for putting putting this together for us. She's put a quite a bit of thought into this along with the staff. Um, and I think I would also just want to emphasize that we still have a lot of work ahead of us. Um, especially related to our policies. So I would just recommend taking a look. Um, you could, as you can see, like, we're really trying to break things down into reasonable pieces. Um, because but this is, you know, this is going to be going along with the policy updates that you saw on the charts. Last month um that were presented to us. So, um. I don't I don't know that I I need to get into a lot of detail unless anyone wishes to ask questions or, you know, had any suggestions. I think in the interest of time, I just kind of wanted to call your attention to it and make sure. Um, you know, you're kind of cognizant of what 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 the roadmap looks like ahead of us.
So let's throw it up for questions that people may have um about what's coming up or. Excuse me just a minute. I have a cat who's being extremely annoying. Goodbye. That would be Emerson. I wrote a fairy tale about Emerson in my Italian class, anyway. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about what we have laid out as far as the plan? Going forward and and then we can take up the question about if we want to target some dates for the retreat in March, as Doug suggested. Seeing nothing. So retreat, we thought it would be helpful to have probably a half day retreat. Um, and we thought March might be the time for that. David has gotten some ideas about. Things we might be looking at strategic planning and those kinds of things. If it's a half day, I'm assuming we're looking at a weekend. I know spring break week falls within that, different times for different people. What's the best way of trying to zero in on a potential uh date or two? Um, I don't think we can pin it down tonight since Benita's not here, but if we can. See kind of where the majority of folks are, maybe we can take some steps forward on that.
Can we do a doodle or is that violate open meeting rules?
I think we.
We can do scheduling.
That's like an app that like you put in potential dates and everybody votes, so it all just gets aggregated. It's really easy.
Yep, you can do that.
So are we looking at a Saturday afternoon, a Saturday morning? I mean, let's at least narrow it down, so we are.
I'd say like. The so the spring break for BVSD is. Uh. The seventeenth through the twenty third.
Oh, yay, that's the same one as SVVSD this year. Yay. Okay, so we are in the same spring break.
So.
Is that is that right, Doug? Are you sure? I thought I thought it was the twenty third to the.
Now I'm doubting myself, so.
Okay, yeah, because SVVSD is the seventeenth to the twenty third.
I think it's the week of the twenty fifth, Doug, the the.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. Sorry, twenty fifth through the twenty twenty ninth, sorry.
CU is the twenty fifth and I think BVSD usually matches CU.
You're right, I'm sorry. So yours is the seventeenth then.
Yeah.
And ours is the, so that's. Um. So the second or the ninth would probably be those days or the um third or tenth.
Yeah. Yep.
Are we are we meeting like in person? Will it be in um like in the same location we generally meet? Or we're gonna meet somewhere differently, just kind of practically thinking about it?
It'll be in the general area and probably at one of the libraries, yeah. I mean, it's possible we could do it at one of the branches. It's possible we could do it at a location that was not a library, but within the confines of the district.
Right, okay.
And you're looking to have this as a facilitated meeting, David, right?
We will, in all likelihood, we'll partly probably be using lead line. So you guys met Marco, we'll be using Marco to some extent and then. Probably also a uh board strategist, like so somebody can kind of talk about. Highly effective boards and then I think you're gonna probably have some business that you want to take care of yourself, but. Yeah.
Okay. So are we thinking a three hour block, a four hour block? Saturday and Sunday are both game. Just trying to narrow the doodle pole.
Either of those.
Yeah, I think I think a three or four hour block on either of the two weekend days of those two weekends. Seems like a good narrow, good doodle option.
Can I say is three or four hours going to be enough?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Right, uh, were you holding up a hand for five, Doug, or were you just raising your hand?
I was saying at least five hours, maybe six, and I hate to like. Give you like that, but I'm just thinking like. If we're gonna have a facilitator talk about something, that's gonna be forty minutes. I mean, I'd hate to be like, you got fifteen minutes, you know, like. Um. So I just. Like, I don't want to have to give them, I'm doing this for free, so. But I'm just being realistic about you, you you what you want to get done, David.
Yeah.
We want to get done the board.
Yeah, so why don't why don't we do this? We'll send out a block of time and we have promised not to use it all, but I and I can send out that doodle pole, Johnny, unless you want to. And I'll send one out for the second, third, uh, ninth and tenth and see what we could come up with. Yeah, and then, you know, if we block six hours, uh, then if we can do it in four and a half, then great. And we'll know more closely when we have an agenda. We don't have an agenda right now.
Okay, that's great. Wonderful. Okay, well, anything else then on this lovely work plan we have coming up? Everyone's just stunned at it, right? Okay, David, um, your update?
Yeah, so.
Sorry, David, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, uh, there was a request for the timeline and hiring staff and revising library branch hours, and so uh, we are currently hiring. Um, we have a a group of people that we're interviewing now, uh, mostly related to the internal infrastructure, so you could imagine, like, uh, facilities, HR, communications, that kind of thing. Uh, we anticipate that most of those positions will begin in January. Uh, in January, we will have a second round of interviews, where we're basically trying to fill out their teams. Uh, and so that's another nine or ten people that will be coming on probably then in March. Uh, at which point in March, then, uh, we would have I don't want to say opening the floodgates, but we have NOBO that we have to consider at that point, as well as a number of other positions uh, around outreach, around programming and events, um, and filling out some public service positions as well, so um, that, that will happen, uh, probably the advertisements will go out in March, and we're looking to fill those jobs April, May, um. So the hours kind of go accordingly following. So right now, just for reference, um, our libraries, we, you know, combined, we're open two hundred and ten hours a week, uh, with all the libraries, uh, together. We try to maintain relatively consistent hours. That's not true of NOBO, uh, but it will be. Um, in January, we're, you know, we Reynolds happens, so Reynolds will go back to seven days a week. So we'll add ten hours a week there. We get to two twenty. Prior to the pandemic, we were two thirty. And then it gradually ramps up as we have staff coming on. So by by the time NOBO opens, uh, with expanded hours, there'll be a seven days a week, as well as then the Canyon Theater pilot we were talking about. That's another expansion of hours. By July, we'll probably be at around two forty, two fifty hours. Um, then we bring on Carnegie sometime in the third quarter or four, early fourth, where we're reopening it to the public. That's an additional hours. And then the big one is Gunbarrow, which we would open in uh, early twenty twenty-five, at least according to our timeline right now. And I think at that point, we're at around three hundred and forty hours. So it's a it's fully a, you know, a thirty, thirty-three percent increase in hours available. It's also expanding locations and reopening Carnegie, the, the Canyon Theater, um. We are not looking at, you know, currently adjusted, willy-nilly adjusting the hours at Main, uh, the pilot at um uh, the main library to extend till ten o'clock on Thursdays and Saturdays is something that will test. And then I think it's possible, possibly, likely even, that we look at expanding that beyond the theater. If there's really, we're getting lots of people and have the cafe, and then then we have to consider whether or not there's teen programs that might be working in con- conjunction with that. And so the, there's, there's potential that it would go beyond the three forty. Um, if we were to expand hours here, but we have good data even prior to the pandemic, so hours post seven o'clock, uh, typically. Um, that hour between seven and eight combined for all of the libraries, we had about eleven people, new people walk through the doors. It doesn't make sense from strictly from a, you know, financial and operational point of view, to have a the hour libraries open till eight. Um, we did shift back from nine o'clock openings on Fridays, and that's something we may explore as well, and I'm not counting that in the three forty either. So if we decided to open up earlier on Fridays and or Saturdays at nine AM, I think, you know, we do have a, we do have traction with families early in the morning and uh a number of members of the public who are here at opening every single place. But is that enough for you for right now, or did you, were you hoping for something more? It, it, it is, it is subject to change, right? So the hiring thing is really the big, um, the big, you know, the big i- it's the major adjustment, right? So it's not just, you know, we are hiring close to fifty people in the course of twenty twenty-four. We have, we have a schedule for phasing it in. Uh, December and January, we're bringing on internal, you know, leadership team, and then allowing them to build out their teams, at which point in March, really, we do sort of open up the gates for that, all of that expansion. Uh, I don't know, a lot of the jobs are NOBO, but there are jobs almost everywhere. Uh, there are jobs with Carnegie, there are jobs with uh, outreach, there are jobs almost everywhere in that March timeframe. The end of March is also the Public Library Association Conference goes into April. We are talking at least internally about how we might have the timeframe where it's opening for those jobs to to interview candidates there and or talk to people and promote the jobs, that there's still a window of top opportunity, so that the job ads for that March group may extend into the first week of April, uh, which would delay us by a week, maybe, in getting people started, but it would significantly expand the candidates who may apply for the jobs.
So in terms of managing patron expectations, is there anything we could say you know, January timeframe that says, look, this is what we're hoping to be doing um, over the course of the year? You know, Carnegie is gonna be August, George Reynolds, that kind of thing, um, because I would think people are gonna be asking.
Yeah, I mean, we've, 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 uh, and Jamie, who was just here, like, Jamie keeps bugging me about a a marketing campaign around this, and I, we just haven't had time to put it together yet. I, I, I would love to announce it. I mean, January eighth, I mean, Reynolds hasn't been open for four years, and we're gonna be open in January on on Mondays, and I think we're having a party there, like, so it's gonna be great. Um, but, you know, um. Yeah, I wish there was a way, and we had the framing and all that stuff to say, like, you know, brought to you by your district money. Uh, then, then there's, there is a little bit of a lull, right? There is a lull in time there between that and, you know, it's, it's, it's possible that in NOBO, we're looking at June one and a party sometime soon after. We'll probably have possession of that building in April, end of April. So it's possible that we could do something prior to June one. I just don't want to guarantee it at this point, without getting possession of the building first. Once I have possession of the building, then we can talk about it, but you know, um. Yeah, you know, Friday is the last day of ordering books for NOBO, like, that's, that's our deadline, our deadline for ordering the opening day collection at NOBO uh, is this Friday. So things are happening. Uh, it's difficult to know if the community would find that compelling at all. I don't, I I mean, I think they're gonna be, what they're gonna find compelling is what you've mentioned here, hours opening. Uh, so, you know, by January, uh, we'll have a comms person on board, uh, is my hope. Um, we can talk to them about, like, how do we frame all this, uh? Uh, maybe it's something simple. It's just like your district money at work or whatever. I don't know what it says, but like the, so that we have some framing, uh, for each one of those things that happen.
It sounds great.
And that's the end of my report, unless you guys have other questions about anything and everything.
Thank you again for all of your crunching away, you guys. Kim, anything to add to your um, legal report?
Nope, nothing to add. It's pretty well laid out there. Um, I think the next big event will be when we know something about the insurance. So.
Okay.
That'll be what it will be.
Great.
Yeah, well, but well, can I add on that with the insurance? I'm sorry, I should have included that. So, right, like, I've talked to Kim about this. So Kim and I will stay in contact. You guys authorized me to enter into the agreement, so the only agreements I'm not gonna enter into, although we're shopping for more insurance, this is property, uh, liability and workers' compensation insurance. Those are the only ones. So you requested DNO insurance, so I'll bring that back to you in January when you're back in session. And we have requested additional, I mean, shopping at least for additional insurance around uh, cybersecurity and around sexual uh liability for any kind of sexual crimes that would occur in vicinity. So there are a lot of children in the buildings, it's something that the insurance brokers advise that we look at, and I, so we will be looking at, but we won't make a decision on any of those until you guys are in- involved, uh. Does anyone want to be involved in the, the check through that Kim and I do, and I received this on December twenty-fourth? Or whatever the hell it's gonna be. I have no idea, like.
Well, if you feel like you need another set of eyes, I can look at something. I don't know what I could offer, but I'll be around.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we can always adjust the insurance. I mean, what we're looking at is, we've, we've got a broker, we're, we're looking at the cost. I mean, and that's ultimately gonna be the deciding factor, like, this is this is the dollar amount that it's gonna cost for insuring at this level. And I think Kim also wants to look at, like, what the extent of the coverage is, especially around property, right? Like, so around property, it's like what are you insuring for? Um, liability is pretty clear. I don't think there's gonna be much ambiguity. Workers' comp, pretty clear, shouldn't be much ambiguity.
Well, if, if you need a pair of eyes, I'm around, so.
Thank you, Johnny.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Long meeting tonight, guys. Thank you very much.
Hey, uh, David, just let us know how things are going, like, with the IT. You know, just send us an update with IT, if that gets, everything's going okay, and you know, just as, you know, we're won't get to see you for a few days.
For a month. Uh, you know, the IT thing is on schedule, so I am so impressed. Um, there are some, you know, logistics in terms of the cities, how, what, how many staff members and how, you know, if whether or not our consultant's gonna need to staff up just to keep up with the city, but I I think the plan right now is, like, as I met with her just last week, and then I talked to Amy Shum today. We're on schedule and on time. There shouldn't be any hitches. We're anticipating that we're done uh, in two days, and that, uh, we are actually already underway with scheduling staff to return on the twenty-second to initiate their uh sign-in, so that we don't have to do a hundred and eighteen people on the twenty-sixth. So we're trying to get some of the people to come back, you know, the twenty-second, if they're available.
First in line.
Yeah. Well, you never really lose, you don't lose your stuff much, do you? You guess you.
No, I get to keep the city's old piece of junk until the thirty-first.
Yeah. I'm ready to turn mine in. I never use it for anything else. I'm printing it's this, I can't see it, it's it's that thing.
All right.
Just an update on that. I, I don't think this press release has gone out yet on the.
No, there's still, uh, conversations, I guess. Um, I can't remember her name. The reporter spoke to Kurt, uh, Fernhopper today for clarification. Um, there were some emails. Yeah, yeah, so there were some emails that went into city council, uh, and I did meet with Nurya and Chris Meszek and Kurt Fernhopper last week. I don't, I, and I was leaving it up to them. I the press release in terms of what we can control, right, is complete, right? It is informs the library's customers of what the library is doing, which is closing the library and the reason why. And there is reference to the fact that in the event of an emergency, the shelter would remain open. But there is no emergency procedures outlined, there's no backup things outlined. And, you know, I believe, uh, the board members who've chosen to, and maybe you all as a body weighed in with the, the government officials, but it's not something we can control. And I don't know that at this point, while we're still asking the city to send out the press releases, I think we're pretty limited in terms of saying, like, we, you know, whatever. I, I, I'd, I'd, I would not agree with a statement that said, like, where we despise the city for not agreeing to set up a, an emergency uh, shelter, because we, right, right now, we don't know, there's, we have an emergency. We don't know. It, it could be seventy degrees and sunny and people are planting palm trees. We have no idea. And so I'm, I'm reluctant to, like, cast a lot of blame until it's there. So I, I hope you're comfortable with that. I, I mean, the press release is ready to go. Uh, I've approved it again today. I approved it a week ago. I've approved it again today, and I'm, I was hopeful that something else would come out, but there is nothing.
Well, it's, it's sort of getting moot. I mean, Amber, Amber and I had our conversation today. She is gonna be writing something as an update on the library, and I talked her through the closure. And I told her that there was still discussion going on in the city about whether to provide anything else for sheltering, and suggested she talk with them. She was actually doing a separate article because the city released a press release today talking about something they're doing with the homeless shelter to increase day services. So it's all kind of getting wrapped up into the same thing, but I think Amber's gonna be doing her story, so the press release may sort of be moot here shortly.
Yeah, the signs are on the door. Um, we did not post an emergency number because there is not one. Um, so I know you requested that as a board, or at least a couple of board members asked last week, or, yeah, last week, if we could put a number on there. There's not an emergency number, so we do not have one posted.
It is what it is. We just need to do what we can do to keep the library out of it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody ready to go? Happy holidays, everybody. See you next year. See you next year when we're a library district.
Yay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Happy holidays.
See ya.